Okay, evening, everybody. Welcome to our workshop. Everybody online. So tonight, we are going to cover two items. The Wildfire Urban Interface Task Force Update and the State Wildfire Resiliency Code Recommendation. And then a discussion about the Boulder County Sheriff's Office Budget Contract. So let's start with the WUI Task Force Update and the recommendations for the vendors.
Well, I did come down that, although county was first, sorry, I was, I was gonna wait till six. Let me get this set up then.
Oh, you need a minute, that's fine.
So we get in.
Maybe while you're doing that, Mark, since you're on the task force meeting, give us a task force update while you're. So.
Let me do a little big picture background first of the state. What if they're, what if they wildfire projects in the state board that. Commissioner Stolzman from Boulder County is on. You met with her one time, very helpful. Before our past meetings. State legislature authorized that state so board. A few years ago, their report, final report just came out. But actually, they didn't have the choice whether to make their own prospectively only or. Or the retroactive ones. Evidently, they couldn't even get legislation to the legislature to give them the authority to do retroactive. So the state basically told the board, you can only go prospect. And that's what the state code provides. And we talked, I think they're able to enjoy to modify. All towns. But some towns and cities are in a position where I find these were not alone. We're ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent of them built out. So if we enact just the state code as we want to. It'll apply to probably new construction, substantially lots with that eight or nine lots that are defined. So if we adopt it, what if that's gonna have eight or nine lots plus whoever does it. We kind of checked around early on in our process to see, okay, what other places we are actually looking at. Some that were retroactive requirements to the authorities just to build up, so the answer was not done. But even a few places that have had a very close years with wildfire. There are two reasons they don't do it. Blowback from the citizens, I can't afford it, you could. I'm treating my provide my mother-in-law twenty years ago, and I don't want that down. And also the cost taking enforcement, the more retroactive things. And cost down, city whatever, for enforcement. We did, we have talked to a couple of places here, especially the Bay. It's very much like Lions, it's a fairly relatively small town geographically. It's almost not built out, they're building, but on those, oh, in terms of expanding outward. Doing that, so they're kind of in the same position we're in. They just adopt perspective on the those. The other thing is that Boulder is seriously built on. They expanded the area of their five. But these kind of got spread out, it was a little building. But several of their city council. Records that I have above what we've got. What could we realistically do? Different retrofitting existing buildings. I've been sitting around kind of the task force today and saying, I saw in the owner reporting that today, they had a candy store. Couple of days ago in Boulder. One of the sitting city councilmen, he's been pushing to, gotta do what it needs. One acceleration of wildfire. It's another kind of getting, I don't. It's retired, but six to five change. You just elect, if you just enact the state code perspective, I believe, you're just wasting your time. So that was some part of our focus, was in the state code. We don't have that much advice about it. And to what extent can we both leave residents, we can put down a form before. Do not some retroactive measure. Those just let's take a good, we kind of get up with. That's divided into kind of like two sets of categories. One is fairly easy and expensive to do, and having a starter or a full system to do. Those categories aren't necessarily easy and less expensive for the homeowners. They're all, we also had a mind in mind, and it was what's easier and less expensive. For the towns to be able to, to extend, try to be doing anything retroactive, try to enforce it as an example. Should we, should board majority choose to enact, and say, you gotta cut down all junipers within five feet of the property. It's pretty easy for town code enforcement officer or. Built from this medium to drive by. But if you enact something that says, for example, you gotta keep all their dry pine needles and leaves out of your bettered flagged roof. Not easy, you can't see it first, you have to put it up on a ladder. To try and run it down over somebody's roof. I think both of those things, you know, you have to define and discuss it. How difficult would it be to do this, or there's some things here they could do themselves, or these things, those people have to contract out. But also how easy or difficult it'd be for the town or fire district to. Clients, officers, to look at these. I will just add one more channel thought, we met with Commissioner Stolzman. They did meetings all over the state, she also asked the damage. Commissioner, and they've done your, they'll go out for partner programs, and she's got experience with this. Not just with the state code, but also how to implement this. Her very strong recommendation was, keep it simple so you don't confuse people. Can focus on something they can get their heads around. Focus on the five foot perimeter around the house. Focus on that, people understand that things that are close to buildings are fire resistant. There's a lot more than probably they love putting some of those trees. Tree has limbs within ten feet of a house, it's not gonna be lived up six feet high. But that was very dry. Look at the five foot zone, simpler, easier to change. Of so many places in the legislature have. It's very difficult to be retroactive, basically. Give you a few things within that five foot zone.
Oh, thank you. And, and also, let's not forget that Commissioner Stolzman was the mayor of Louisville during the Marshall Fire in the hundred and. So I know this is very near and dear to her. Okay. Let's, um, let's have Erin.
That's one good question. Sure. Is the county thinking about any kind of retroactive requirements? Or do counties even. Set, except the building code, they have adopted this building code?
In, in the county, in the county or in?
The unappropriated.
Yes, they can. There's some discussion on what is the jurisdiction having authority? It could be the fire department, or it could be local government, be county or municipality. And I do think some of the articles I included in there, the links or that trustee Browning had actually provided. Mentioned the county looking at it, it's, I don't know how. How strongly they're actually considering trying to really implement those. But there is at least some discussion on that aspect going retroactive. Or during my presentation, I might say more, doing something with a landscaping type code. That might fit in just as we have weeds and concerns about tree branches or limbs. It falls into somewhat of a landscaping type code that we want to look at is really what the retroactive options are.
Not sure at this. Boulder County was pretty much out in front of this, and it's adopted the strict. Retrofitting requirements for all kinds of things, construction companies and stuff for a while, that were kind of in the state. So as witnessed by the state, we have the fire, all the people out in the county, and they're at greater risk. Public service, so we had about what's, that's. So they're kind of a little bit ahead of the game, how far retroactive.
So Erin, you have a presentation, no set?
Sure, yeah. So I would start with building on what trustee Browning has discussed. A lot of that is what's most controversial part of this, dealing with some of the existing properties we have. And what we can do for the wildfire mitigation. I would start, so the wildfire mitigation ad hoc committee, as it was called when we had the resolution for it. Started talking about the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface. Well, that is really more of most of the information now you will hear is wildfire resiliency code, the WRC versus. There is still an international wildland urban interface building code. But the state is calling it the wildfire resiliency code, and they've taken a version of the international. WUI code and modified it to develop what they have for their code. So the first topic really that the task force was looking at was adopting this code. At the time it was formed, there wasn't a state code yet. We started to realize they were working on it. We didn't know how quickly they would actually develop their code or put it forward. And so within the year that the committee has been out, they have gone through the state, their whole process. And put forward and adopted the code that the state now has. So we currently have until June, I thought I had it right in front of me. May get down to it, it dates though, they're on the other. Topic, July first, this year, the state adopted the recommendations. For the wildfire resiliency code, and they gave that until April of twenty twenty-six. To actually have municipalities or jurisdictions of authority. As I mentioned, that may be a fire protection district, or that may be a municipality. They have until April of twenty-six to actually adopt that, and July of twenty twenty-six to become compliant. It's what the state has put into their code. And their code, I put in the presentation, is somewhat smaller. There's not, there's twenty pages or so of that code compared to a thousand or so when you look at the building code. But again, you have this code that starts, chapter one is really about the scope and administration of the code. As we have with the other building codes, we would modify that for the town of Lyons to really fit what we have. Most of this code could be adopted by reference. Currently, we adopt the international building code, we're on the twenty twenty-one building code. And we adopt that by reference with the modification that we want to make. We adopt the twenty twenty-one plumbing code, the energy efficiency code, et cetera. So this would be another code that we could adopt by reference. And so we would adopt the state's version of the wildfire resiliency code. Modifying that chapter one for scope and administration. Actually, chapter two is definitions. Review those definitions, see if there's any of concern, make some changes. Chapter three starts to get into the meat of the code. And that really is talking about what you're gonna declare as the wildland urban interface. Some jurisdictions may not have the entire municipality or county in that WUI. Right? Our discussions were that we felt, task force that is, felt that the WUI. Was the entire town was in the WUI. I included a map or a screenshot from the actual state mapping. The state did put out mapping that documents what are low areas of concern, medium areas of concern, and high intensity concerns. So in that, you can see it's all in the medium intensity. And you can see where there are a few areas getting north up Apple Valley, right where. Have the county by the Rainbow Bridge, where the red one on the top comes in. A little bit further west of town, you can start to see another high intensity. So most of the high intensities are outside of town. Lyons Valley of States is the one down to the south that has been a concern. But the town itself is the middle aspect of that. So the state has said anybody in both the high or medium intensity locations. Should really go with the class two requirements they have in the code. They put together two classifications of steps you can take, both on the building side. And on what I've called more the landscaping side. They call those the structure hardening, chapter four, and the site and area requirements, chapter five. So structure hardening really deals with a lot of the building code. Trying to make sure that new buildings are filled with material that are fire resistant. So one change in this is that chapter four has class one for low intensity locations. And class two for medium high intensity location. The town would adopt this, or we proposed they would adopt it, really documenting everything has to meet the class two. Because the entire town is in the booth. So keeping it simple for people would be, everything has to meet class two structure hard, all new construction. Moving on to chapter five, the site and area requirements are where you get into a lot of landscaping. It does deal still to some degree with decks. There is some construction that may fall into the site and area requirements. But for the most part, it is talking about landscaping. And there too, there are class one and class two requirements. So we would still want to go with all of the class two requirements. The big change comes in this section, the task force discussions where. A lot of times adopting by reference, you don't get to see the code. People come to our code, and then they have to go out to the international building code, they have to go track something down. It's not documented as clearly, and that's easily findable, searchable. What is actually out there? So the task force recommendation was potentially we adopt this whole state code. But we opt out of chapter five. We say we are adopting chapter five with the following modification. And those modifications are, we are going to rewrite chapter five. And then we can list all of chapter five as it is in the code. But list it into our Lyons Municipal Code, so it's all there straightforward. And still with the state code, this is about future building or future development would have to meet this. This current section would not talk about retroactivity that was discussed. However, there is this concern about having it be retroactive when we have potentially ten building lots in town. Annexations will be future development, but otherwise in town, you're not gonna have a whole lot of. At least quick modifications to properties that we could go out and require that. So how do we deal with the existing properties? How do we do that retroactivity? So in discussions, it was the town could look at what is being put into the municipal code for the land use. As trustee Browning mentioned, items like the not having junipers. Or limbing up your trees to six feet from the ground. And we could, in addition to them being in this building code or this wildfire resiliency code for future properties. We could put that into our current code into chapter five, where we talk about mitigation of property. Where you currently have regulations that you have to follow if you are a property owner or. The owner or resident tenants have to follow. Things such as keeping the weeds or grass to within six inches from the ground, keeping them cut. Not having other nuisances on the property that could be a health concern, such as piles of branches or. Other item that we find in that code. Sorry, I guess that's under chapter seven, the Lyons Municipal Code. Where we would actually look at adopting that, again, that deals with weeds. And how we handle trees, so we could put in these landscaping codes. And so in addition in the packet, there were a number of the items that are actually spelled out. In the wildfire resiliency code for future development. And board could look at or request recommendations or discuss. What items like the town currently tried to adopt for existing properties. As trustee Browning mentioned, you know, trying to keep it simpler, trying to keep it to ones that are. Potentially do it yourself projects or cheaper projects. And then we can try to get some buy-in, that there is understanding, there are concerns for the wildfire. Negation, and here are some items that the town is going to try to do with current property. And at the same time, we've adopted this code for future development. That shows a huge list of things that the future developments will have to do. So that current property owners to see, well, here's what everything has to be done in the future. This is what's really being looked at, it should be done. And the town is now trying to say, okay, can we adopt a couple of these? And put that into our code as current property maintenance requirements. Give people a period of time, I put in there six months, but you could discuss a timeframe to get that work done. And then you have to go out, and the big kicker is the code compliance. So I can flip back into the staff report side, I was on the task force. So doing this as a part of the task force and the presentation, and then also there is the staff report. And now working a lot with planner Richie, who's had a lot of experience on this and in the planning realm. More than my limited experience with the town. What would it take? How much do we need to budget for code enforcement, code compliance? So I think that really becomes the question that can be talked about during budgeting. Do you adopt something if you can't go out and then try to bring about enforcement or compliance with that new code? Let's double check, but I think that covers. Most of it.
I think you should also mention that we discussed the importance of public education about this thing. And also public input for the board to make the final decision. Size. There's some discussion about perhaps the next quarterly meeting, if we don't want to go to this fall. And that the theme is, don't they take serious, so the wildfire risk mitigation. Boulder County had a meeting kind of like that here.
We did, I think that's, I think that's a nice one idea, and I think it would be great to also. Um, so I have to thank you, that, thank you for all the work on this task force, and also a lot of work for the volunteers and. Um, so I have a couple of questions that I wanna see if anybody else does first. Trustee Williams, I'm really interested to hear.
I don't have a lot of questions, I'd like to do some listening here still. I think we do have to be sensitive to the differences among the structures and households. Between those that are in the center of town and those that are in that neighborhood town or in the fire district that are not in town. It's a fundamentally different. Challenge to protect the structures that are in what we typically think of as the wildland interface. And Stone Canyon or on any of the edges of town. Or even against some of the town-owned properties that have pretty dense woods. That is, if you have a block that's all residential homes. So I'm not sure that there's an easy way to manage that process and still be. Have a consistent enough approach that it's easily explained and easily. That is something that, that I struggle with.
Um, I really appreciate the work of the task force, and I also appreciate strong partnerships. I'd like to think that the partnership we have, the Lyons Fire Protection District. Might actually enable us to host this dissertation or this public survey. But also possibly discuss the budget to cover these costs. I just, I think that that's more about how much is this. You know, to enforce. And I meant to think that we're not going to. Or without liking.
I'm still not sure. I, I'm, I think I'm implying that it's pretty. Aggressive. And I think that's not to be the edges of town on. Timeframe in which retroactive changes happen. That's a lot much effort. You know, I can see that at all, so can, for instance, and some properties would be, that's huge. For my property, I could do it again. Um, you know, how much can we have a task force that's a group of volunteers or senior citizens? Though I, I actually, I categorize nine years old. Really senior citizens. Uh, they did a home, where it could be done on a volunteer. I, I really would like, would like to see in my lifetime. Every property of this town. That is, period, all of them. At that six foot, ten foot. Six foot higher, third the height of the tree, of those. Those basements, and I, I think sooner rather than later, in places like Stone Canyon. Uh, VP, Eagle Canyon. Anything that is on the edges forward, like Christie Williams said. Stuff that is supposed to be town-owned property, that is not. I, I don't know what good it does us with so few building opportunities. To really just say, okay, any major renovations that occur are going to have to have. This, I don't think it does the same, it would be something. Now, I, I, I worked with a Ted speaker who's actually a professor at CSU. And an entire team that comes in and evaluates which houses in a particular location actually mean the most mitigation. And he said the biggest problem they've had with that is polling. Because they can identify with very certainty, in, you know, whether it's California or here, and they look at everything, vegetation. Rainfall patterns, wind patterns. Previous wildfires, humidity patterns, and it's very, very thorough. But like in a place like Stone Canyon, they may identify two, two houses. That in their opinion, town should be going for that renovation, because. If those two are saved, nothing else needs to happen. If those two are saved, nothing else needs to happen. But politically, they're not finding that acceptable anywhere. Um, you know, because I think people are the question of that. So I, I think we're going to have to. Probably take a two or three prong approach to it. And I could be somewhat generous, I mean. I'd rather see us have a fairly significant retroactive, let's say you've got five years to. Or three years to get it done. As opposed to since when, I'm just thinking. Then it's a much.
That's right. Just surrounding.
On the public education and by end of this, probably the number one motive, one of the factors. Lions may be class, technically classified on the map as medium risk, but if you go out, look at that now. As, as Aaron said, there's a thing that, that the high risk thing are to the north, one to the west, one to the south. And if you look at beginning roughly at the, at the. Boulder Well County line, everything knows to a rest part. And so regardless of. We just focus on the down limits, we may be medium risk, but insurance companies, everybody I've talked to, with my experiences. They think we're high risk, no matter what the state match is, there have been. You know, if we, if we get a room, people are something on public education, I might ask for sure.
And could we get someone from an insurance organization to come, not, not an insurer. But someone from the state perhaps, you know, this is uninsurance.
I was gonna say, that's something we required about. What extent staying important, but insurance and state insurance commission. Try to even give them parents or schrifts, to be of discounts and not cancel people who have done these kinds of things and. Well, I wouldn't have been able to tell so far the answer to not much. They're talking back and forth, but there, there is not a state regulation, that somebody has completed a. Wildfire partner litigation program certified about how, but they get a temp to this man. It's not there on state level.
Well, maybe, maybe it's worth finding out if there's someone who can come and answer citizens' questions about it. Um, okay, well, I have, I have some questions. Um, first of all, I'm looking at the math and I noticed that according to the math, it looks like the corner of fifth and main. And if I'm not wrong, a little corner of Walt Self are in the low risk category. There's like these two light yellow dots, which I find. Strange. But either that doesn't make, I think they should be treated the same. So the. The, the potential retroactive measures that are in the recommendation list. Are those also in the wildfire partners mitigation?
Some of them at least are, they don't have the full list in the wildfire partner. I believe the wildfire partners, anything the wildfire partners had, I believe it in that list, I have not compared them side by side.
Great, and then, um, so we're talking about opting out of chapter five and making some changes. Does the state have to approve us opting out of anything or changing anything having to do with this?
So it wouldn't really be opting out, it would be, we're going to modify chapter five. We're just gonna, rather than just adopt if I reference to where you say we adopt chapter five with a few small changes. We are going to adopt chapter five, basically in its entirety, we are just going to rewrite it into the municipal code. So it can all be seen.
Okay, chapter seven, does the state have to approve that?
There's no specific documentation I've seen of approval in their processes. Um, the same with previous adoptions of new building code, they just say you have to do it, and I've seen no. Mechanism for their enforcement. Of you doing that.
We have to meet good minimum set for, and allow us to go straight to everyone.
Okay, okay. Um, and then one more question, um, so I, I saw, I can't remember what chapter it's in. But if, if a property owner. Creates an addition that's over five hundred square feet, then the entire property is automatically retroactive. To the code, is that, am I understanding that right?
That would be, I'd have to reread that section of code, but yes, it could be in there where you make a modification of a certain limit. And you therefore have to bring everything up to the code.
Not just the addition.
Right, that would be similar to current's building code, if you do something, or the international energy code, if you meet a certain threshold. Then the entire existing development has to be brought up to standards. So I would have to verify what that is, but I, I can see that being in there.
Well, um, well, I think this is, I think this is great, I think we have, definitely have some things to work out when it comes to enforcement and budget and timeline. Um, I think six months might be too soon, especially considering it's going to be winter and hard to get this work done in the winter maybe. And I think five years may be too long, you know, but, um, I think those are details we can talk about when we iron this out.
We wouldn't be talking about, and I would be talking about from the effective date, which is thirty days after we pass it, so there's some.
There's some, there's, there's a runway there, I know, you don't want to make people get up on the roofs in February.
That's one more question.
Yes, please.
It's five hundred square feet?
I think, yeah.
So. Most ADUs would be less than that. Because we're adding a lot of cost to it.
Those are about eight hundred.
So.
Are ADUs considered additions in this case? As attached or detached?
Um, either way, if they're detached, they're in the question, is that in?
New construction on that property.
I would imagine, yeah, that's what it sounds like.
I'm not sure how that code reads.
Yeah, we, that's a, that's a great question that I would love for staff to analyze, is how would this affect ADUs?
You know, we've been trying to make that cost less.
Yeah, would be. No, particularly if people had to then retrofit their entire.
I don't remember how that reads.
That's a great point. What else, other thoughts?
Could point out the CWPP is coming along, the drafts are out, right, so the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And that will also. Have suggestions or recommendations by the Lions Fire Protection District. That support the idea of what should be done, as we were calling it retroactivity. For two existing properties. So that may give some indication of how they are classifying properties outside of town, because they have their old fire protection district. And properties in town, from my involvement, there hasn't been. A large differentiation between properties specifically being on the edge of town. But there is based on a concern from wildfire, being a larger property that might be agricultural. Um, we don't have too much ag, but properties then that also border our open space properties. So you will find some of that information that was discussed or questioned in the CWPP. Which hopefully will be finished up before the end of the year.
So the CWPP is finished, let's, I'm just thinking about how to, how to time all of these things. The CWPP is finished by the end of the year, or this, this code is done. And now we're talking about our local codes, that's three kind of moving parts. I would personally like to, um, I'd like to have a meeting with the residents, I'd like to talk about this. But I think until we see the CWPP. Um, it wouldn't make, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to actually adopt an ordinance.
I'm always seeing a.
That's the best.
Um, right, I'm hope, I, sorry, the next meeting is, oh, maybe Wednesday. And I will see, again, all the draft ones are out there, so I was hoping we were going to be. Pretty much done by the end of October. That's me pushing it, I think, but I would say before the end of the year.
But remember, that's going to be voluntary due to fire districts not going to implement and enforce regulations on their own in town. What you're going to do, so it's, it's much like the state code, and this is what you should do. But in terms of what they force people to do with existing buildings, that's not what they're.
No, 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 but I, but I do think that we should all be walking in the same direction.
Yeah, I have a question too, if the town adopts the CWPP, or is it only the fire protection district? Because we do need to make sure we're not adopting conflicting.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, those are all recommendations, so I don't know what we did, if we adopted it in twenty eleven, when the last one was done.
No, that had, it was kind of just.
Can we, can we talk to the fire district and ask what the expectation is?
And then if they do have a sample, could we start kind of a company?
Yeah, if they have stuff they feel like is ninety percent there, maybe we can take a look.
Just, everything I think of timeline wise, in terms of us being able to make a decision on this goes to April fifteenth. I would love to see us be able to make. A, this, you know, this was a major priority of ours.
Yes.
And I would like to see us looking at that kind of a timeline. That's why I'm curious about all the state stuff and the fire district stuff. I think we owe it to the next board to not hand that board, so.
I agree.
To be clear, that, that state code is separate and also not talking about any retroactivity. And so you could, at least my opinion, easily go forward with this as the building code. And even rewriting that chapter five into the municipal code as part of the adopted. New wildfire resiliency code, which then is in place for all future development. And you're working on the retroactivity or the land use code separate, that would be a separate ordinance, as you said, it's a separate part. So I, from what I hear, there's not as much concern about that, and it would just be the direction of. Do we want to make all lions? Class two together, there's only class one or class two requirements in the code, they didn't split it into three, don't know why, but while there is a low, medium and high category. Anything in the medium category has to meet class two, so we would be adopting the strongest standards in the wildfire resiliency code. If you follow the recommendation of making all of it class two requirements for future development. That's chapter three, chapter four, we haven't recommended anything except saying we are going to the strongest class two requirements. And chapter five also, the strongest requirement, and those are just. Factified directly in the L N C, making the L M C a little bit longer, but then it's all found in the L M C. And you don't have to go back to the other state code, so it seemed like we could move forward. With that aspect, without the concern of additional enforcement, or without the concern on. Previous properties, and you get it out there so people see what's required for future development. And they understand now there's also a discussion of how can we get this. Further developed to go retroactive.
First part of that, how soon can we get that done?
Um, so when we were talking about other building codes, I don't know if we haven't set for when planner Richie was. Doing the other parts of the building, I mean, we can set this up to try to bring. Forward the I R C in a couple of meetings, or if you have a timeframe for the other discussion on building code.
Not necessarily yet, can you all hear me? Yeah, okay, um. I think we've been trying to target a, um, work session sometime in the next month or two to talk about contractor licensing. Um, that issue that we brought up, um, earlier this spring, as well as timing for hopping onto the twenty twenty four code. So as, um, we have some requirements that apply if we don't get on the twenty four code by July. So, um, I'll work with Victoria and, um, Erin and try and get it to you as quickly as we reasonably can.
One distinction we raised was between among rural, we and urban. Properties, another one that occurs to me is between residential and commercial. And I haven't seen that distinction in here, part of the reason it might be relevant is that the fire district tends to focus its. Fire marshal duties on the commercial side, not on the residential side. And it is obviously a fundamentally different proposition to fight a fire in a commercial structure than it is. On, in a block of residential buildings.
I also, so I, I'd be surprised, depending on what. If any retroactive requirements we pick, many of those would touch commercial properties, a few maybe, I don't think there's a lot of. Juniper planted around commercial properties in, in the small, down, down distance to the lions and. Um, you know, a lot, a lot of them within five feet of their property have sidewalks and parking lots, so. I think the impact would be pretty limited in terms of what we're looking at retroactively to commercial.
Or these particular requirements, they have different density issues, they don't really have vegetation issues.
Doesn't really distinguish between the two, so in terms of, in, in property renovations or any new buildings. Um, in commercial properties, they're going to have to meet the state code.
Right, that's what I was just trying to look at, I don't see anything commercial versus residential.
I'm just curious, did the task force need with the fire protection district though?
They were in all our meetings, they're part of the camp.
And it was Chief Piski mostly.
Yeah, and, and two or three other people too, from time to time. Well, let me just say real quick, it's not the gender or anything, but I walked the market park today, and I think they did a pretty good job of cleaning up there.
Oh, great.
Looks better, and I, I ran across three moms and five young children. And who apparently go there a lot, and they were, they were okay with it, and they said, oh, they left, they left the balancing log. The kids and I walked down, it's pretty cool.
So glad to hear that.
It's like a series of little classroom openings. And then everything in between is still very green and lush. It just chopped up all the.
Maybe, maybe we do something that will actually make everybody happy.
Director Cosgrove thinks for the money we, we got a much better.
The little trail that goes over the county road, it's, it's not a regional, it's, it's very unobtrusive.
All right, well, let's wrap this up, we're going to talk about it later during your meeting, so thank you very much for the presentation and for all the work on us. Um, and then I saw, I saw a bunch of cops out there, so I imagine that coming.
It's a bow for the sheriff's.
Three cops could figure out how to get through a locked door.
They need a firefighter for that.
Yeah, I don't know if they'd get it.
Yeah, I unlocked it.
I thought I heard him.
Yeah, let's make sure it's on.
Um, I got my.
We have a chair there.
Oh, I guess so. Why don't we have Jason?
Jason and Randy are.
Or Erin, if you don't mind, we could, Jason, Michael, come on over here so you can.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Well, welcome. Thanks for coming. Um, would you mind, you're senior, so I, I'm Mayor Robyn, I, I've been out all summer, so I think some of you haven't had a chance to meet yet.
I'm Sharon McCam, I'm going to be starting up here.
Yeah, I'm Commander Randy Wilbur, and I took over night shift commander, so I'll be supervising the town, I'm track town supervisors. Um, I'm Jason Oakers on the operations division chief at the sheriff's office.
Terrific, thanks for coming.
Of course.
Okay, who, um, Director Iston, do you want to kick us off for this?
Sure, good evening, um, we met with the sheriff's office a couple of different times, as we mentioned, and we had our budget workshop last. Uh, board meeting and discussed a couple of things, and one of those was the, the thirty three percent increase in the sheriff's budget. Um, and so it was requested that the sheriff's, um, office from Boulder County come in. And speak to that a little bit, um, I do want to preface something though, that when I did my calculations. Um, about, uh, the three F T E being needed to cover the fifty percent coverage. I was assuming that the sergeant, uh, was included in that, and then was subsequently informed that the sergeant. Does not get included in those F T Es, so the county's, um. Calculations are that three additional deputies are needed in addition to. Uh, the sergeant and of course the detective and the animal control. So I just wanted to clear that up because that was, um, my misunderstanding there. And the sheriff's office, um, so kindly wrote a memo. And the sheriff's office um so kindly wrote a memo um with. Detailing some of the questions that answers to the questions that we had, it's pretty lengthy. Um, but I will go ahead and let them kind of preview and and talk about that and then we can open it up for questions.
Thank you so much.
I'm not sure even where to start and I know, um, I think Cassia or Victoria, they sent the memo to you, I think the probably the one thing that was in there that. Um, I I think during our first meeting, there was a question about detectives, what do detectives do, do you see the detectives? And I I don't, I I. I think there's probably a detective that's working on a case of lions every day. Um, because if there's a domestic violence case that goes to a detective, if there's a sex assault, someone's home or business gets broken into. Those things go to detectives, um, the amount of time they spend on them, I think really depends on the complexity of the incidents, um. Sometimes a domestic violence even been arrested, been made by patrol deputy, it could take. Um, a lot of different follow up questions and meetings with detectives, so they could be very involved with the victim for months on it's. Another, I think, just a recent one is that the gas station, there was armed robbery there, um, that's still an open investigation, so I can't talk about it's. Uh, in great detail, but I can tell you that we've done a couple of operations, we we have a suspect identified, we've done a couple of operations. Uh, typically the type of operation that they're doing requires at least three detectives to do. Um, in conjunction with another law enforcement agency, we served search warrants of two different um residents uh last week. So each each one of those search warrants is at least a handful of detectives, if not more, so. So the half a detective that you gets that it really translates to as many detectives as you need, um, when there's a big case. So so you don't see them every day, um, but they're working on a case every day. And then sometimes there's a whole team of them working on a case.
Question about that, are these within the town limits or are you fucking eight oh five four up?
Uh, within the town limits, yeah. And I I'm happy to answer any questions, if there's a lot that um was in that memo, so if there's specific questions, please ask.
And I think, you know, I and I just want to say we so appreciate the work that you all do and this is in no way. Meant to disparage it in any way, we're trying to figure out how to how to make this increase. Work within what we have is kind of a miniscule town budget. So just just to lay that groundwork.
And also, I think, I mean, I I've been with the sheriff's office, I actually started as a volunteer in the nineties, but I mean. As long as I remember, we've had a substation here and a great relationship with the town and.
I think most of our questions relate to the fact that. In the timeframe between twenty three and twenty five, when the cost of living increase has been fourteen point four percent. Looking here at one hundred and three percent. And so we know we were getting a special deal earlier than I understood when I came in the one twenty three. But to see this level of increase on our budget. Two questions, where does that stop? Well, three questions, why? And then the third question for us is. What could we cut? Because you know, now you're getting, this is real money. Uh, so that's where it's not about any of the work you you all have done, I mean, we are thrilled with that. But fiscal responsibility is what they start for us.
Yeah, that does um. I I'll probably go back maybe to the first one is is why, um, obviously, I think. Uh, probably for the longest time, like I think Lions has paid, you know, one point four, one point five F T Es. Um, I or deputy positions, I've been in my position for just about two years, it'll be two years in December. Um, one of the things, I said to my predecessor and um. One of the things that I recall him saying is we're working to get Lions up to. The proper staffing and then there there was an agreement to get the town up to that um staffing level. I'll be honest, I hadn't had those conversations with Victoria or anybody here about that, that was just the agreement that. Kind of was passed on to me and I think obviously there's been turnover, Cody was here, he's gone, I suspect he was aware of that, so. Kind of in this weird spot of that just not. Re relying on old information that I at least I don't have firsthand knowledge about. So that's the reason for, I think, that the cost increases with the employees, um, I can tell you since. Well, since twenty twenty, I mean, with COVID, with George Floyd and everything like that. Um, the the police officer salaries in in the states have just increased. I don't want to say significantly because that makes it sound like a huge number. But I I think as towns, municipalities, counties have recognized. You know, we we lost a whole bunch of cops, we need to re recruit cops, they just increase salaries, so. Um, all all of the salaries across the state are just going up because it's hard to find cops. And so that probably talks about two maybe, um, what was the third question, I'm sorry?
A third question is where can we, when we're looking at this level of increase? Where can we look at cutting costs that does not substantially cut services?
So I don't have an answer to that question and and the hard thing, um, so we. We build our our contracts um to say, this this is how much uh a deputy salary costs. Um, and this is how much the kind of the support for the employee includes, whether it's with training, vehicles. Body worn cameras, records, kind of all, everything that supports a deputy doing their job. So unfortunately, just everywhere salaries are increasing, the the price of materials is increasing. Um, so I I I don't know how to cut costs if you want the same level of service. Yeah, I guess I guess from my perspective, it's. As you see like half a detective or portion of an animal patrol person, something like that. I I can't, if I'm a deputy up here and I take a case and I don't have, say, evidence section to take care of. And then what do we do with evidence, if I don't have the body worn camera section? That's all, this is kind of a package deal, it's kind of called with the deputy. Um, because if I take a big case and I'm close to a detective and we're not paying for half of the detective. And that doesn't blow the detective, doesn't get followed up on, it doesn't get the resources that it would normally get, so. To Jason's point, it's kind of. Air twine a little bit, I guess, is the best way to say it. Um, and we've had other places that tried to piecemeal that and it did not work well for them, um. They were out of compliance with evidence, they were out of compliance with body worn camera, they were out of compliance with a bunch of other stuff. Um, that could really get an agency in a lot of trouble if they are not compliant with some of those things that are mandated by the state, so.
Just as I have, if I understand it, the cut the level of coverage that would be covered by this was twenty four seven covered, but. The anticipation is with three F T E deputies. And the anticipation is that roughly fifty percent of the time is within the town, fifty percent is in the. Um, unincorporated parts of Boulder County. This as a hypothetical, and I'm not suggesting, but as the hypothetical lines that we just don't have the money. Uh, instead of twenty four seven coverage, we want to do sixteen hours of any coverage. And we have to cut back to that, what would happen to the out of town limits coverage out in the county? If we cut back, would it affect that as well, or would you with with S S O still? Do the same level of patrol and stuff out in the county?
We'd still do the same one, we'll patrol out in the county.
And is is the is the targeted um coverage level on the county twenty four seven as well?
Can I add to that real quick? Also, in that scenario, it would add in more of a uh response basis. For the town lines, um, you wouldn't get people up here doing the proactive stuff probably. Because of the call in the rest of the county and what goes on because the requirement not to be here, uh, be in the contract, so. Um, having the deputy presence up here, the traffic controls, things like that, just being seen, it would be more of a. I'm wanting to go to Lions if I'm called. Type of thing during whatever hours we're not here, I would assume that'd be somewhere in the middle of the night, but still. That's that's where you lose the relationship with the town.
So I have a follow up to the follow up. I think trustee Williams and I were looking for these um, the attachments under historical calls for service, the Excel document titled Lions workload survey. I didn't see it. I don't know where it is.
It's in your email.
It's separate in a separate email, okay, so I missed that. Um, because I'm really curious if you know off the top of your head. As to how many calls you are getting within the town limits during the night. Like between the night six p.m.
So I didn't come prepared with nighttime calls in line, I just certainly I can pull that data just to see where they're at.
And I just, you know, I'm looking at in the letter here, you mentioned um rabbit mountain hall and a high open space. In significant activity there, but again, we are really just focused on town minutes, the ones happening. What call, what what kind of calls you're getting within town and what hours, and I know um the sergeant um. He would give us reports telling us what kinds of calls, I don't recall like the time. So I think it would be um beneficial for us to understand more when those calls are coming in and when do we need a police presence? Or like, I don't know, the last five years, for example, I would just like to see a record and maybe that was part of a attachment I missed.
I I can log on to your your wifi to see if I can event now, um, we have it on a. Uh, our B I dashboard that we're exper- experimenting with and sometimes it's very slow because it draws data from like ten different. Areas and I have to, it looks at the entire county and have to start pairing it down, but I will start logging on there.
So, so Mayor Robyn asked a, one of the questions that she asked was. Kind of, you know, so these these increases, when when do we expect the increases to level out? And I I think that's a really good question because I know you all have been struggling with finding deputies. I I know that recruiting has been really hard and so I'm curious to know, number one, um, do you feel like that's? That's better now, do you feel like you all are being able to hire the folks that you want to hire? And number two, knowing that the cost of everything is increasing, you know, somebody said to me the other day, oh, sales tax is up, isn't that great? It's like, yeah, that's great, but also the cost of everything is increasing, so it's almost, you know, it's kind of scary, so. You know, what can we expect over the next five years?
I wish I could tell you. Um, so, um, well, let me let me type this in, but I have I have some thoughts, so I think that um. There's a couple of things that have happened over the last like three or four years, so I think um Sheriff Johnson has recognized that. That that we need to make sure that we are being consistent in our billing with with all of our entities, with all of our partners, whether it's the. The school district, Lions, Superior, we just need to build consistency. So uh, we're building that consistency, you guys were kind of a luller, so we're trying to get you up to that.
We we have been aware of that.
Yeah, so so we're just, we're trying to, we're trying to fix that and we also look back and and notice that's um. Our our billing for for every contract town in the in the school district, we were. We weren't including all of our kind of operating budgets in it, so we tried to right size that, uh, which we did a couple of years ago. Probably the the hardest, well, it's hard for me to predict, um, I I can tell you that's. Um, the the deputies and the sergeants are part of a collective bargaining, uh, they have a collective bargaining agreements. Uh, which which has been helpful because we are now able to at least forecast into a couple of years to say. Next year, their raise is going to be four percent, so um, there. Uh, we were one year in to the two year agreement, so they will start renegotiating it next year. How much they renegotiate, I have no idea, um, I think I do like um, like Lions, the county is is trying to cut costs. And recognizing that that they don't have their funds coming in, so what that does to a collective bargaining agreement, I have no idea. So I I wish I could project out, um, I I think in 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 one of the emails, kind of on that sheet, I I. Uh, at Netherlands request, I went back, I think, I think I went back to two thousand nine and kind of looked at our average cost increases. And I tried to figure that out and that that's in there, you can look at some of the early years, it was like one percent. You know, and I don't think that that's a a fair guesstimate because I think back then we're like, well, which deputy is working there? How much do they get paid, which sergeant is working there versus just generalizing it and saying. That that a deputy costs this much, you know, based on an average salary. So I I think the most recent, probably a couple of years is is a good percentage. Uh, but I think that I think that's like seven percent, I think that's too high.
And recognizing that it now is unionized and also that the county has been deciding to match that for. Uh, for those who are not in the union. I I don't begrudge that at all, I mean, I spent thirty five years in Suffolk County in Long Island, which has the highest pay for police officers of. Any place in the nation and they.
Nobody moved there.
And we also, yeah, incredible levels of taxes, um. I I think. You're not getting paid enough, you know, I I. We can't continue to handle these kinds of increases. When our revenue is not going to grow certainly exponentially or even. To this kind of level, I think, sorry, Chris, we've made it pretty well aware of the areas where. About to pick back up. If we even knew, because I you I can tell you that that um. Two years ago, we were told that we. Incredible if I'm wrong in this. I don't want to do two here then, but that 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 was going to be the toughest year and then it was likely going to get a little better.
That's why, that's why it's confusing and we had this discussion. We were expecting a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase. To get up to speed with the right numbers, including half a deputy or detective. Then these other factors, I think, is what created the additional hundred thousand, so it's um. Being more consistent with the overhead and admin expenses that. Hadn't been and um just keeping up with their uh requirements for some, but so. That's my understanding, this is the extra hundred thousand. Is um, we knew the one twenty five was, but we're also looking that next year is going to be that too. So what will that reflect?
So I, so I I, well. So with next year, I. So I mean, right now, we we increase by full deputy position, so I think we can. Um, spread that increase out over a couple of years, um, if that's helpful to the town. Uh, but I think ultimately we'd like to get three F T Es, uh, three deputy F T Es. So that it's just so we build that consistency in. Um, after that, it's the the increase is really going to be dependent on. Um, the the salary versus we can probably, like you guys, our our biggest chunk of our budget goes to to salaries or. So if it's a four or five percent rates, um, then it probably goes up four or five percent. Um, to be honest, I think from what I've heard about the county's budget, you know, we're not going to get any. Significant increases to any of our operating budgets for a while.
Sorry, I was gonna make the comment that there's a huge difference between following a four or five percent increase, like we were free inflation with our own employees. And a thirty three percent increase, and I just, I wish there had been some way to kind of incrementally prepare. For this adjustment and not have like twenty one percent in one year, twenty five percent in one year, thirty three percent, I mean, it's just like, it's astronomical for. Katie, our size, I just wish there had been some kind of like five year plan or ten year plan or I don't know, some sort of plan that would kind of prepare us. We could prepare, basically speaking.
I I think that's a, that's a great point and. Is there a way to get a five, seven, ten year fund, even if it's Rangers, you know, because. What we have to look at now is, okay, what capital projects are we? What road are we not going to fix?
I I don't know if I can, want to lay out specific numbers now or is it something?
No, not right now, but um, you know, as we have these discussions moving forward. As Victoria planned, it's actually, it's a staff member that.
And I think, I mean, quite honestly, the the biggest increase that you saw this year, that that was a deputy position. That's one deputy.
And thank you for what I think is a very thorough explanation. So try to switch over to this side of the room, I guess. There's no way for us to really. Save any time without. In your opinion, jeopardizing the safety of our job.
Yeah, it's, I don't know where you've gotten, because I feel like um. I went through this early on in my tenure up here with the contract when Connie Sullivan was mayor. Uh, with the contracted of Brian Wagner, who was a specific deputy because we wanted. Uh with the contracted of Brian Wagner, who was a specific deputy because we wanted somebody in the town the entire time. Which gives you exactly that, uh the ticket revenue was high, his production was high, he was here all the time, but that was voted out. Um and to me, just from the street side things and the volume of stuff that goes on up here, um. You can't. It for, I just can't put any other words to it, I, it's needed, it's definitely.
And I'm like, I wish I knew and trust you so.
So from a streets perspective, feet on the ground, how do you feel about the hours between midnight and six AM like? Do you really feel like we need a presence here in town for those hours?
Well, the contract right now says fifty percent of the time at night and the majority of time during the day, so. You're getting time during here and the time that you're getting at night is, it's sporadic, it's. It's very call independent, you know, um the big answer is yes for that big call. Um I was told a long time ago in my career that I'm paid for that big call, I'm paid for that King Supers call, I'm paid for that. Pearl Street Mall call that happens here in town, that's the protection level that we're supporting, that's why we're here. Um is that happen every day? No, uh uh, there are nights where there's no calls, absolutely, the, the winners up here are. Even in town in general during the day, the winners up here are slow, at night it's even slower, so um but the public safety. Is the highest level of service that we provide and when it's needed, it's needed and that could be. It doesn't have to be a consumer's call, it could be a domestic violence call, sexual assault call, assault call, trespass, I mean, there's so many of those things, so. It's, it's really hard to pick and choose and that's what scares me, is that when we take. The ability to have somebody here for X amount of time, they're not going to be here for X amount of time because they're going to find something else to do, then they're going to be needed here. Um we had a bank robbery uh when I was up here and myself and Steve Kelson were in the substation when it came out of the radio and the guy still got away. I mean, we're thirty seconds from the bank, um but who knows when that stuff's going to happen and that's, that's what we're here for, so. Um it's, it's a hard question to answer and I don't know if I did answer it, but I would, I would worry if. There was a stipulation that, you know, it's a pre-pro until these times.
We would advertise them.
Put a sign out front of town, right?
I, I have an answer to your question. Hours since happen. But I'm only able on this, this is to go back to September seventeen twenty-three, so. So the, the busiest times, just with looking at this are, are probably between, say, six to. Six to six, six to eight, uh yeah, six AM to six to eight PM. And they'll tell you. Wins, during that two years, Wednesday at two AM, there's been five calls or two.
So we can all sleep better on Wednesday.
Yes, yeah, and, and that, that's just an example, I mean, I can tell you any hour, any, any day of the. So, so there's certain slow times in town, uh and, and probably to Bill's point, I think. It, I mean, it's your guys' decision, which one of you, I recognize that the top spot in the jury. Um I, 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 I feel strongly about the importance of just having a police officer drive from town. Because you never know who's going to see that cop say, I'm going to turn around and go somewhere else to commit my crime. Whether it works or not, I don't know, um I, I live in Longmont. I don't think I have a lot of crime in my neighborhood, but every time I see a Longmont cop ride by my house. I'm glad they're directed by my house, because maybe the bad guy won't.
It would be helpful to us that we can, can, as soon as you have it. Thoughts about what's, what's going to happen.
Next year, my best.
Yeah, so I've given assured next year's.
Yeah, that was in our budget presentation, it's about to go to a little over a million, a million forty thousand. I'm sure Cassie has had other fingertips.
I'm thinking of twenty-seven. Just that, soon as you know, or if you, as soon as you have an inkling, you know, that. Find that out and love it, by the way, I found out this.
And, and that's really hard, um and I say that because it is.
You understand.
The unions negotiating typically. The collective bargaining group has changed a little because now, now we know what next year's going to be. Typically, we don't know until September, October, what pay raises are going to be, and then we start trying to figure it out, so.
So have you all, have you all hired enough now or, or is there still a shortage?
There's still a shortage.
I'm sorry. The other thing I would like to be certain of, I'm not saying why. Is that all of these numbers relate to inside the town limits, because we know when it comes to animal control, that has not been the case.
So I, I can tell you, I went to our prime analyst, said, be the calls, I want calls inside the town limits. The calls outside the town, town limits, so that's what the Excel spreadsheet breaks down, um I don't.
On that sheet you sent, um. It just says Lions PD. But we don't know.
But if you go to Lions PD and then Holbert County District Three is further down.
Are we supposed to be looking at District Three as the town under?
That's everything outside. Yeah, so that's everything outside of the town. So um I will tell you that, that the guy that ran this, our analyst, is probably the smartest guy that I know. At least when it comes to computers and data, GIS systems and all that, so I suspect that he sat down. Has a map that's got the town limit, it's going to plot the location. I'll, I'll tell you though, that I think that um probably in my opinion, some of, there, that's probably not a hundred percent accurate. Because I suspect that if, if we make a traffic stop and I catch somebody speeding down Main Street, they're going east. They stop on sixty-six and thirty-six, that's going to show up as a outside of the town, even though the crime happened in town. Related question. Sheriff's Office contracts with Superior, Netherland, and Lions. It contracts with the school district. What percentage of the Oakwall Sheriff's budget comes from those contracts? Versus general county. That is a great question. I, I, give me a couple of minutes, I can get that for you.
Before we end it, I, I do want to. Cassie and I have asked a couple of other questions that haven't come up today, tonight yet. And when we were looking at what are some places we might be able to cut, you know, services. One of my questions was, could we share a sergeant? Like with Ned. Somebody else, and the answer to that was no, we really do have full-time su- supervision needed here. And it was similar to what you just asked Sergeant Christ about. Because we got clarification, they really don't want you, the sergeants on calls unless it's an all-call. You're really, your main job is supervision of our officers.
However, the caveat to that though is that most of us are working sergeants and work up here a lot, regular stuff. So you're getting a sergeant, but you're also getting a, I would say a half-deputy because I jump calls. I cover my officers, I run traffic, um I do the quality of my stuff, I do anything, if you have a world that I can, because we only have two. Or three that uh have perfection ladies that run the whole company, so if they're down in Superior and you've got a bear call up here. Uh so stuff like that, so that's where it becomes hard to, it's, it's, it's hard to. To put that tangibleness on it and say. You know, twenty-five calls a day or whatever, because it's, it's very hidden miss and, and, and we do so much. Off of what I do, if I'm, if I'm in the substation doing supervisory work or proofing reports from the town of Lions or payroll or what have you. And a call comes out and one, and my guy's tied up on a domestic wherever, it, it falls on me and I take it. So you do get a sergeant and a half-deputy, I would say at least from just the sergeant itself.
And there, there was one other area and um actually, this is another thing Cassie and I were talking about, but we haven't had a chance to ask you. Since the SRO at the elementary and high school is paid for by the school district, not the town. But you supervise him?
Yeah, the town of Lions takes on the supervision of the two SROs, so we have the one in Iowa that's full-time and the one in Lions. So we decided that about, well, when I came here the first time, uh with that. Responsibility came over mostly because of the locale of Lions and being so close to here. And then just having that one extra person under payroll, so basically the. Iowa High School and Eric and the things that go on there are under the control of the day shift supervisor in the district board. Lions doesn't have any involvement, all I do for the Lions SRO is approve district reports. And do this payroll, so um that doesn't take anybody out of town for that part of the collateral. But you know, the flip side of that is having the supervisor here under the control of the SROs or vice versa. You have Mitch here that again, we rob a little bit from the school district because Mitch jumps out of the school. To do stuff as well, so he's always listening to the radio, uh if, say, I wasn't here. Deputy has an arrest, he's down at uh the jail and a call comes out, Mitch will leave the school. So there again, it's not a tangible thing that you put ring around, but it's a resource that we have here that we kind of brought Peter to pay Paul. For anything that goes on in town, um and fortunately, I can't say enough great things about Mitch because he's one of the best at doing that. Uh he, he's so ingrained into the community and he is always listening to the radio, I, I rely on it, actually, uh for town backup. All the time, so.
That was one of my suggestions was, could we charge whatever percent of officers? Twenty percent if he's one of four employees.
I actually have to watch out because um it, it's a slippery slope, if Mitch comes, I can't pull the mantle because. You know, I said, hey, go run traffic or run Main Street, I can't have Mitch doing that. You know, so it's a, it's one of those things that just happens because, again, it goes back to the public safety. That's the number one priority and if there's nothing going on at school and there's something going on in town and he can be there, he's going to be there for that reason.
Yeah, so that I did in my numbers. Twenty percent could go.
Perhaps, so Sharon, I'm really glad you're here, we're looking forward to working with you, I promise we'll be nice.
I have an answer to your question, so um it, it is not a very clean answer. So I'm going to say valves nineteen to twenty percent was some really, really rough. Math handwritten in my notepad, uh comes from contract towns, um but I will tell you that doesn't include. Um all of our operating budgets because we have a multi-jurisdictional drug test or some multi-jurisdictional, a digital forensic lab. And a number of grants that we draw on also, so that I think that that number is. Probably higher than it is the, the nineteen to twenty percent in contract.
You want to ask about, you asked me to remind you about the. Supporter from Minnesota.
Oh, yes, oh my gosh. Right, the coresponder position, what happened to that position that we used to have in Lions? For like two years.
So the coresponder um position is actually run by another part of the company, uh it's not directly tied to the sheriff's office. Um so I, I can't, I don't know that I can necessarily answer or commit to giving coresponder phone here.
But the contract doesn't expose, does not include that.
No, and I, I think, I mean, coresponders will, they do, still come into town, but I think uh Lebep was here. Yeah, and she, uh spent a lot of time here, um right now, her office is in Betterland. And I think she really services the entire map of this stuff. Uh so the coresponder that's here may come out of Holbert, um may start working Holbert, but may drive up here.
Do you know which county department? Yeah.
Yeah, they're just, they're just not part of our budget. There's just a group that works for us.
I'm glad you asked that because I, I thought they were a part of the sheriff.
So they're out of uh community services. Which is also the umbrella of just the county administration.
Alright, well, we'll wrap up the workshop, um and thank you all so much again for coming, you know, our. Yes, we have to be finishers for the time, but I think. I'm comfortable saying to a person, our, our main goal is to keep our community safe, that's, that's how we're, so appreciate you.
I had one to ask a couple of questions, do you want that call break down by hour or day or week? Um and I, and actually, as, as I'm talking right now, just vaguely remembering this. Um in twenty twenty-two, we went to a new records management system, so some of the data. Uh the drastic may not go back five years, kind of pulling from multiple systems. And it's probably not comparing apples to apples, if you will, so I can get that, and then. Do you want me to work with Victoria and Cassie to see about different. Budget increase levels?
Well, thank you, everybody, we're going to take on a little break of a burly starter. Well, thank you, everybody. We're gonna take on a little break of a burly starter.
I'm sorry.
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 Can I see your show minutes of folks who would like to speak tonight? Okay, that looks like less than ten to me, so. Alright. If it's more than ten, then everybody gets three minutes. If it's less than ten people, then everybody gets four minutes. So. Plan accordingly, add your extra minute, whatever you need.
Sing a song.
Sing a song. Yeah, somebody bring a guitar. Alright. Professor, let me know when we're all set.
Alive, we're ready.
We're ready. Okay, great. Well, good evening, everybody. Um I will call the Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Rogan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Dottie.
Present.
Trustee Lowell. Trustee Browning.
Present.
And Trustee Hamlin.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. And to the people who live for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody.
We must acknowledge with respect as non-native people that the land on which we stand, live and learn. Is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne and Arapahoe peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Uh before we um hit the reflective moment of silence tonight. I want to say a couple of things because it's been a hell of a week or so. And earlier today, very early this morning. Somebody messaged me and they had a, they just had a question. And they said. I'm really hesitant to ask this question because I'm afraid there's going to be retribution against me or against my business. And that really was like a punch in the gut. Because that is not who we are. That is not who this community is. And you know Congressman DeGusso, he sends out his weekly emails. And in his weekly email, he had a quote from the governor of Utah, Spencer Cox. And what he said is, we can return violence with fire and violence. We can return hate with hate. And that's the problem with political violence. It metastasizes because we can always point the finger at the other side. And at some point, we have to find an opera or it's going to get much, much worse. So I want us to remember that we are all neighbors. We are all part of the same community. We are most of all, all Americans. And we should continue to treat each other with respect and with kindness, no matter how our views on any particular issue converge. So with that, I would like us to take a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Your motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Motion passes.
So now is the time for audience business. I think most of you have been here for our audience business before, but I'm just gonna kind of recap how this all works. So there is a sign up sheet and a clerk will call your name. When the clerk calls your name, come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You will have four minutes. Um please address the board as a whole. So um that's who you're talking to is the board. Please keep your comments pertaining to town business. Um if you feel the need to show support for somebody speaking, please don't clap, please use jazz hands. We will see you. Okay? Um and then after everybody on the list speaks, we'll do kind of the last call to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak. And when everyone has done speaking, the board will have an opportunity to respond and then staff will have an opportunity to respond. I assume that most of you are here to talk about the IGA, which is on the agenda tonight. And the IGA has been moved up in the agenda. Um to directly after staff reports so that you all don't have to sit here for hours and listen to us talk about other stuff first. Because we assume that you want to hear that conversation. Um so with that.
Professor. Yeah, first I have Ed Russell, followed by Cat Russell.
Uh Ed Russell, seven seven zero Steamboat Valley Road. Mayor Rogan, trustees, town staff. Um first, I'd like to congratulate Wilma Spencer on her appointment to the Student Advisory Commission. Her father and I used to ride the Boulder bus together. Her grandparents are neighbors down the street. Excellent choice, Mayor Rogan. Alright, enough of the niceties. My subject tonight is the alignment or misalignment of town government and town people. I'm not just talking about Lions, but communities around the state. Last week, voters in the town of Palmer Lake, north of Colorado Springs. Passed by better than a two to one margin and ordinance requiring voter approval of all annexations. So welcome to the club, Palmer Lake. This past June, in nearby Colorado Springs, an annexation approved by the city council was repealed by voters. The margin was eighty-two percent against the annexation and eighteen percent for it. That's called misalignment and it's bred by distrust the local government. The ballot question two B results from last November give us a pulse on how Lions residents. Are likely to vote on potential upcoming annexations. In case you've forgotten, the ballot question two B amended the five acre rule to close the carve-out loophole. And that margin was eighty percent for the amendment, twenty percent against. The IGA process has been very divisive. If the IGA continues, I can't imagine that including properties in PAA that have been strongly opposed by residents. Will serve townspeople or increase their trust in town government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cat Russell is out, followed by Marty Gold.
Mayor, staff, board of trustees, thank you for listening to me tonight. Okay, my name is Catherine Russell and I live at seven seven zero Steamboat Valley Road, Lions. You have heard me speak many times during this IGA process describing. How any future development of Steamboat Valley is a serious wildfire risk that jeopardizes the health and safety of current residents. We have shown based on scientific analysis that Steamboat Valley is the FEMA poster child. For where not to develop concerning wildfire hazard. The risk factors include development above the blue line, development in wildland ladder fields containing grasses, mountain mahogany shrubs and pine juniper trees. A valley exposed to strong prevailing westerly winds, development in land dominated by steep slope and deep gullies. Development with inadequate egress routes. And development in a very high risk of wildfire, higher than ninety-seven percent of communities in the US. According to wildfirerisk dot org. And yet the current draft ITA that was uh not approved by the Board of Trustees allows for expanded development on the Boone Boone property. And never seen before zones with a new term called limited developments. On lands that are now designated as rural preservation. We are told that these limited development zones only include uh roads, trails, utility water lines. But these lands that are zoned agricultural, as we understand it, already have allowances for these types of easements. So why is there a need for a new zoning with this type of wording? I have a sincere concern that areas of a limited development on placed on rural preservation lands. Could ultimately be modified to include structures. Without adding a single home, Steamboat Valley residents do not currently have a safe emergency exit. The pit, the pinch point restriction on Fifth Avenue causes a traffic jam even on normal days. We have been told that in case of wildfire. The town could make Fifth Avenue a one-way exit route. But then would that mean that emergency vehicles would not be able to go in? We have also been told that uh Fifth Avenue wouldn't be an egress problem if households would simply leave when they were told to leave. But a CNN reports that in Western Altadena in the twenty twenty-five LA fires. Where seventeen wildfire deaths were reported, evacuation alerts came hours late, if at all. I request the board to rethink the IGA to designate all of Steamboat Valley. As rural preservation and remove the dubious limited development zoning. From the Boone Carpenter and Connor properties. I can either stop now or have one more paragraph?
You have forty per seconds.
Okay, as you know, wildfire is already a deadly reality in Lions and here's a picture I'm gonna pass her and it's really cool, but I anyway. Um this is um a buck herd. They are drinking from a tub uh from uh I snapped that photograph from our our uh uh living room window. And it's thrilling to see this, but I just wanted to reiterate that um. This is a sad reality because ever since the Stone Deadly Stone Canyon fire, wildlife um has uh very much increased in our valley. And I I think it's because uh Stone Canyon just cannot support them and they've come up and over the ridge and down here. And so it's a sad reality. So thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Next is Marty Gold, followed by Brett Bader.
Hi, everybody. Marty Gold, fifteen sixty-eight Steamboat Valley Road, unincorporated Boulder County. Today, I feel like Bill Murray and I'm living in Groundhog Day. And I feel like the whole IGA process is kind of like watching Popsatani Phil get fed into the sausage machine. And I'd really like to emphasize that, of course, everybody here really cares about Lions. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. And the whole IGA process with the town has created so much distrust amongst our neighbors. Nobody really knows who's gonna try to do what. The Carpenter property. I've seen three different owners at this point trying to get this annexed. One of them tried to do a flagpole annexation up to the next forty acres. You know, it's a constant revolving process. Very disturbing to me and I don't want to have to get up here every week and kind of reiterate the same stuff. You know how I feel about it. I agree with Cat totally. Steamboat Valley should be just left as it is. And I really hope that that, you know. You folks recognize that the town has lots of problems. There's lots of infill that needs to be done in the town. I don't see the need to be annexing more real estate. When we've got a gravel pit, we've got a fence around a gigantic weed problem at this point. Got another place down at the end of town for sale. You know, let's Lions, I feel like this has just sucked the oxygen out of the room and it shouldn't. The IGA thing is just, I think it's really distracted from all of your work. And that's why it's really important to kind of move on to the other important stuff. That makes Lions a great place to live and I appreciate all of you for listening to that.
Thank you.
And I could reserve my time for somebody else.
Um Brett Bader, followed by Tatcha Robuski.
Yes, hi. So my name is Brett Bader at ten eighteen Horizon Drive. Thanks for all your time uh as board members and mayor. I appreciate you leading nice uh um moment of silence uh leading up to that. So for the past year and a half, the community and the board have been navigating complex issues of the IGA balancing community input with growth planning. A Freedom of Information request discovered an email uh a year and a half ago to where town planner had been communicating with the developer to coordinate a Texas. Quote Texas two-step to bypass the five acre rule. A lot of trust was lost uh between the the community and the board during that time. And so. Um when the board voted earlier, it's here to keep many parcels in rural preservation. I thought we were past that episode. Uh but here we are again. Issue returned again in July when the wrong IGA plan was posted online. And we were told that was an accident, but the meeting last week uncovered some issues with the plan planning process that uh still leaves questions about what's going on currently. So it seemed like the board didn't quite know what the town planning staff had been negotiating with the county and the and the planning staff seem to be working outside of what the board had voted on. The draft IGA has removed all mention of conservation principles, but kept all mentions of growth. This in effect used the IGA in a manner that I and I think many other residents don't like. It was clear last week that some board members don't remember voting on us. Also, the designation of limited development was created in the last iteration of the IGA to quote memorialize and the discussions and sentiment of the board at that time. And this doesn't quite fit with what was voted on, I think. What does it really mean that the blue hatch, limited development on top of green preservation areas, uh and I'm speaking fairly early to the Connor and the Carpenter parcels? Property is not eligible for annexation, but the limited development can happen there. It just seems illogical. And here's why I don't like it. The limited development designate designation just opens the door to future development in these areas. There's no legal definition and so it can be more easily changed. Future board can reinterpret it in a different way and open the door for changing it. Even last week, there seemed to be different interpretations of what was limited development. Examples cited include a road or path for emergency egress route, utilities easements such as a water line, closed loop on Vasquez or a water tower, even trails. The property owners would need to consent to any limited development considerations, but I don't see property owners agreeing to such development. What's in it for them? So it seems what we would be left with is no development, but a leftover designation in the IGA that will make it a right target for annexation in the next iteration of the IGA. So for that reason, I urge the board to remove this limited development category over rural preservation.
Thank you. Next, Tatchip Robuski, followed by Crystal DeCosta.
Tatchip Robuski, four thirty-five Vasquez Court. Hello, everyone. Yeah, everyone so far has spoken to multiple points that I'm in agreement with. And I think just the general feel for me is, I said it last week, it's been a long process. Initial board votes in, I think it was February, gave us a sense that things were kind of settled, and we're going to move on to the next episode. And since then, especially with this new limited development, what was maybe a proposed increase in the developable area in the Boone property, it just seems like all of a sudden there's some changes, including potential requests from landowners in these areas. And it just seems to be moving a little bit fast for sudden changes to come up seemingly out of nowhere. And if these changes are going to be considered, I think we need to commit to a further involve community process because we did task force studies, we did town polling, we did a lot already, and a lot of feedback came. And it's like, cool, let's move in that direction. And then suddenly there's these changes. And so it does, the tenuous feeling that a lot of the citizens have had in this process have only increased again. And that's where we're at. So if there's a strong agenda by the board to move forward with this new designation of limited development, changing developable area size, entertaining further discussions with property owners for requests for changing the designations, I hope that we can continue once again to pause and give ourselves collectively the time to do it thoroughly and meticulously. Thank you.
Crystal DeCosta, followed by Brian Donnell.
We need to discuss, but we know Brian Care first.
I'm Crystal DeCosta, one one three Fifth Avenue. Hi, everybody. As the arts often do, we can provide palate cleansers. So this is a little break. A Lyons Creative District update. As you all have likely heard, Jocelyn Farrell has taken the LEAVE EV position. She's been a tremendous help to our LCD's application efforts to Colorado Creative Industries, as well as with our submission of several ambitious grants to the LCF. Jocelyn will be greatly missed by the LCD team, but we know she'll be hugely effective in this role with LEAVE. A letter of recommendation for her was written by us, and we're excited to be cheering her on. A search for a part-time, for now, go-getter for LCD is underway, and a job description is attached to your handouts, and there's a couple available here. The LCD grant request that I'm happy to report on included a salary support request of twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars for a required part-time employee executive director, and that requirement is from Colorado Creative Industries. A request for helping fund the dedicated technology needed for our launch, helping with the expenses surrounding a couple of special twenty twenty-five holiday kickoff offerings, assistance with the creation of collateral materials startup marketing needs, a request for support toward twenty twenty-six programming with a two-pronged focus, the Sesquicentennial and the Sundance Film Festival, creatively honoring the past and readying for the future through community events and workshops, the formation of collegial partnerships, and showcasing our array of homegrown talent. And lastly, funding to send two representative to next year's summit in Trinidad, Colorado. Prior to submitting these grants, we checked in several times with CCI to see what was delaying this announcement. We were told July, by July first, then early August, and then within two weeks. Conversation last week confirmed that the LCD is very much still in contention, but a decision was made unilaterally, the required site business to all locals who are in the hopper of consideration. These are no doubt difficult times for the arts at the federal level, and the LCD remains excited to proudly help bolster the arts as the centerpiece of Lyons' Baneful Banquet Table, ramping up to promote, support, and expand a sustainable local economy that gets money in the pockets of the people who make this an interesting place to live, visit, and experience. Our site visit is slated for Monday, September twenty-second, very soon, and will include CCI's Deputy Director, Christine Costello, and Katie Ziegler, CCI's Grants and Accessibility Manager and CCI Regional Rep for this area. We're busily creating the agenda. It'll be a challenge to capture the usual cool creative Lyons vibe on a September Monday night, but our three P.M. to eight thirty P.M. sketch, it so far includes meeting with core members to discuss opportunities, goals, and challenges, a brief meet and greet with local business owners, civic leaders, area artists, a golf tour with arts of, a golf tour of arts amenities graciously offered by Kristen Bruckner. Golf cart number two, tour two is Planet Bluegrass with Craig Ferguson, plus an opportunity to hear a world-class music at the Lyons Farm at Barnes, Postcards from Near and Far Met on Monday. There are still, by the way, tickets available, and it helps benefit LCD, the sale of refreshments. The following questions that are listed are what we're going to be concerned with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Crystal. Brian Donnell, followed by Kelly Sproul.
Yes, my name is Brian Donnell, three nine five Vasquez Court, and lived here, my wife and I, and family at the time, lived here for twenty-seven years. I have been raising issues about the water pressure in, on Vasquez Court for about twenty-five years, and we finally have some acknowledgement that there is deficient water pressure in the fire hydrants. And I appreciate the board has made a decision that there's no action that can be taken because really, the only action that was, was put in front in terms of the water pressure assessment was a five million or six million dollar water tower. That's a lot of money. And now I'm seeing a limited development with housing development at our elevation. And I do not see the number of homes there that would support a five or six million dollar water tower. And in addition, affordable housing wouldn't be in that factor for having to fund a six or, or a five or six million dollar water tower. So we've kicked this can down the road for a long time, and we are sitting ducks for a fire. If our houses catch fire, there's no guarantee that the second house could be put out, if the first house could be put out. I don't know how, exactly how that works, but I know it's stated that there's deficient fire hydrant pressure. So we're setting up a situation where the next board or the board after that is going to make some sort of pro-development sort of deal, and the development's going to start without a water tower. My point is simple. Don't do any development and don't set it up where the next board or board thereafter can do that development without putting in the water tower first, because I guarantee you, deals are cut. And, and you're hearing a lot of comments about the trust. You don't have the trust that would, would tell you that they believe you put the water tower in first. I'm actually not anti-development, but without the water tower, I am, because it's absolutely negligent to proceed without that water tower. I can tell you, I used to come to board meetings and get up there, and the water had stopped running on them. So please, take care of the things you need to take care of first before you tee us up for more development, which will guarantee we don't have the water pressure to fight fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Sproul, followed by Roger Flynn.
Kelly Sproul, four fifteen Vasquez Court. We are all so fatigued, I think, on both sides of the fence, it's fair to say. But personally, with our town staff leadership's relentless push for growth despite clear opposition from the community. The situation in Colorado Springs with the Carmen Line annexation mirrors our town struggle here in Lyons. Just like the lower Arkansas Valley, where farmers and residents fight to protect their water and way of life, Lyons residents have repeatedly voiced our desire to preserve our small-town character over sprawling into rural preservation grounds. Yet our Board of Trustees and town staff seem deaf to our concerns, much like the Colorado Springs City Council ignoring thirty-one thousand three hundred and forty-four signatures against their project. Lyons history shows what happens when citizens are ignored. We've rejected oversized developments before, like the eighty-one percent vote to close a development loophole, and we've set a five acre rule to block large residential annexations. Small, smart annexations like Clark's Hardware or the Farmet brought tax revenue without sacrificing our identity. But now, the VOT and Town Administrator are flirting with projects like a cemetery road, dismissing clear community opposition with vague TBD responses. This isn't leadership, it is quite the contrary. The Boulder South Creek case is another warning. Developers promised affordable housing, but skyrocketing costs and unrealistic plans left the project stalled, and the developer now begging to slash affordability commitments. Lyons risks the same trap chasing growth that sounds good on paper, but not even, and burdens our resources and betrays our values. Palmer Lake and Steamboat Springs prove citizens can stop out-of-touch boards through recalls and no votes. If our VOT keeps ignoring us, April's elections, when signups for new members begin, will be our chance to demand accountability. We don't need Colorado Springs sprawl or Boulder's broken promises. Lyons deserves leaders who listen. As a parent of three young children, my foremost concern has always been safety. No one, not once, there has never been an explanation or a response of how any of this will keep us safe with all of the existing issues we're already facing, especially in the northern part of town. No one has explained why there's a continued push to develop land in a severe fire zone, an area where escape routes are already in out of pit and water access is limited. We have not received a reasonable explanation, not one, of how the necessary infrastructure would be addressed, nor compelling argument for why adding more homes and residents to an already strained area makes any sense. This is outrageous, and that is not an arguable statement. And I, I wish that there could be dialogue because we come up here and we say the same things over and over, but there's, there has not been any response, any feedback. Why is this okay? Very few residents have expressed support for these proposals, but we mentioned last week, there, there was one standout, not a resident, but ended up being a real estate broker. They're largely unpopular with the people of Lyons, and it's deeply troubling that repetitive community feedback is continuously dismissed. And above anything, last week I asked for it, please just explain. Just explain why there is this push because we're already complaining about a lack of transparency with many of you, not all of you. And that's, it's two years, and it hasn't changed. It's two years, and it hasn't changed. We all, as well as you all, someone also spoke to this, have much better things to do than to be wrestling with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last, we have Roger Flynn.
Evening, everybody. I'm Roger Flynn at ten ten Steamboat Valley. And you know, I've written a lot, and we've gone into the details of all of this in every eighteen iterations, and it brought me to a thinking about an old country song, Waylon and Willie, about let's get back to the simpler things of life. And this thing keeps on getting complicateder and complicateder, this limited development stuff. With all due respect, we don't need that designation. The town has authority to put roads, sewers, electrical lines on outside the town boundaries. One interesting thing I'm worried about, even though it says in the memo that we would require the consent of the landowner, that's not required under Colorado law. And having something in a memo on the staff that everyone's going to forget in a few years, if we're going to have any ability for roads or anything like that, I think the town should say, no eminent domain. We should not be forcing, you have to pay just compensation, right? But no forcing people to sell easements or anything like that. Let's, let's work together. Beginning of the meeting was great. It also reminded me of what Robert Kennedy Jr. said the night that MLK Jr. was shot, that that was also very poignant. We have to work together. And some people, I think now that this is getting sort of bigger and bigger and more complicated and more complicated, I know there's a movement out there to say, to heck with IGA's. That doesn't do it anymore. I don't know about those who only long on. I think IGA's are good because what they do is they give, they set what, what our future goals are going to be and what our values are. And our values, as, as like we're saying, safety for our children, safety for our seniors, safety for everybody, small-town quality of life, fire safety is, is another thing. I think the what we can do is go back to the basics. The twelve, the twenty twelve IGA has worked. Everyone supported it. It had some odd things like still amassing Apple Valley, which it can happen, but outside of that, it worked. And that was just green. Rural preservation. Now we got green and yellow and red and red stripe this way and blue stripe that way. And now I could see the frustration. Let's chuck this thing and get rid of it. I think if we need water tower, we need water pressure, it can be done under existing law with the consent of the owners, I would hope. And we don't need all this stuff. And I think Kelly's right, and, and Kat was very right about that we haven't really gotten an answer. Why? There's no more affordable housing. That's off the table. Why all these million-dollar homes up in northern Steamboat Valley? It doesn't make sense. I had not really heard an answer. It's uneconomical. Everyone agrees that. Because the Boone owners wants to, you know, split up a big cash benefit so they can retire. I understand that, but that's not the reason to violate these values that we have in Lyons. I think we should basically keep it the way it was, and the, the need for water and sewer and things like that can be done under existing laws. We don't need all these cross acids and everything like that. I think to bring back the trust and stuff, and I have talked to many of you, and I appreciate talking to everyone on the board and the staff over the years on this. I mean, this has been tough. Let's dial down the heat, get back to where we were. Nothing's really changed since the flood, and then after the flood, they said, we'll go in Eastern Corridor. You're on your agenda tonight is how many Eastern Corridor annexations? That's where things are. We don't need million-dollar homes, multi-million dollar homes to pay for the five million dollar water tower. Why are we doing this? I think we should, everyone wants to keep it the way it is with the ability for some infrastructure to help out water pressure. So thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, great. So, so now we'll do word responses. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Can I still talk?
Yes, please. Sorry about that.
Hi, Matt Vavreena, four oh five Vasquez Court. I just want to echo a lot of the comments so far, and mostly state that I think this latest draft is worse than the March, March draft that we had, and both in wording and in the map. So I, I know a lot of the wording was removed under the guise of making it a more vanilla document, sticking to the legalese. However, there is a processing statement on intent, and what has survived in the intent states that "This agreement is intended to encourage the natural and well-ordered development of Lyons and the county, two, promote planned and orderly growth in the infected area, in the affected areas, and three, promote the economic viability of the parties." Stricken, however, is to promote the importance of both parties of protecting sensitive natural areas, maintaining view corridors, enforcing nuisance ordinances, and ensuring that new development is compatible with the character of both Lyons- enforcing nuisance ordinances, and ensuring that new development is compatible with the character of both Lyons and the adjoining county properties. Also stricken emphasizes proactive planning for the future needs of the community while balancing the demands of environmental and economic sustainability with the community, community character, wildlife and ecological preservation, historic preservation, and property owners' rights. So I think all of that intent is important and we had a full task force to build upon that. So I I think the wording that was stricken is kind of clear in its thrust. That relates back to the map. The boon property that is developable has expanded by my eye at least three, I agree. And I think the no development area can potentially be backdoored without very clear-cut definitions. I think that no, no development area with the blue hashes creates confusion. There was confusion in last week's meeting. Could you camp there? That that was confused. I I'm not sure if it's P C D C members or from board members. And it allows for passive recreation. So potentially you can skew what passive recreation means and and build up things. None of this is B O T directed, so I would, at a minimum, I would encourage you to go to go back to the twenty-twenty-five, or the March draft. And better yet, to echo Roger, that there were very few complaints about the twenty-twelve I G A. So I think that's overall a better I G A. And I agree with Roger that it does not, we, I think as a community, want to retain the I G A. It does set up what we want in terms of agreement with land use with the county. That reflects our values. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So, all right, we'll go to word responses. Would you like to move to the first?
Sure, I have a number of specific things. First of all, I want to thank you for the stability this evening. It was alarming last Monday. I'm someone who has, who's got a pretty high national profile and I am attacked nationally just for existing. And so when the atmosphere exists like it did last week, I find it alarming. So thank you for being much more respectful this evening. Second, one of the things that is not said often enough is that this is a negotiation with Boulder County. We don't make unilateral decisions here. We negotiate with the county. And if you've ever dealt with the county or anything, negotiations with Boulder County are never simple. One thing that is rarely talked about. Third, Kat, I appreciate what you said about Altadena and not getting the evacuation word out. It is, because my understanding is that I'm correct in this, it is the Sheriff's Department's responsibility to take care of evacuations here. They were unbelievably good this Long Canyon fire. I was there watching everybody. And we we can be very happy that we have good people who are here fast for that kind of stuff. Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you mean by that we should be focusing on infill. Because that is, in fact, when it comes to housing, precisely what this board has decided we should be focused on is infill. And so much of that is from things you've told us going back to twenty-three months ago, twenty-two months ago. And so that has been a major focus of ours, as opposed to expansion, other than the Eastern Corridor, has been to focus on infill. So I'm not quite sure about that. A definition of a limited development category, that would have to be developed. There is no clear definition of that. So that's something that would have to be developed and created. The notion that we might be deaf to your concerns is simply not true. As for voting these folks out in April, I was quite disappointed that nobody who showed up regularly for these meetings put their name in for the opening that existed on the town board over the last couple of months. Would have been great to have had any of you decide you wanted to be a part of that, who are town residents. I understand many of you are outside of town. But that, that's just something that's, that's noted. We will get to the end of this soon. And I appreciate your willingness to slog through it with us.
Yeah. Rusty Brownie?
Yeah, I'll say most of my, most of my remarks for when we get for this on the regular agenda. I wanted to respond to a couple of specific things. On Brian's issue about water pressure, we're aware of that issue. Along with, we should have account of how many other infrastructure issues there are in mind, but I did want to point out that the same engineering study that showed a five-million-dollar loss cost for water tower and related water lines also listed other options. One of them, if I recall it right, was like the half-million-dollar option for a pump placed down, a pressure pump placed down lower in Steamboat Valley. So I just want, if we ever gone into that in great detail, it was kind of like a preliminary group of estimate, but I do think that there are options for dealing with water pressure issues, which don't just exist there, they exist in other parts of town as well, without annexing and expanding outside of town boundaries, you know. Also want to say thank you to the people who've come here. All of us signed up to show up here most weeks when we ran for office. Citizens didn't do that, but those of you who have turned out again and again and again, it's not easy to do. And I know you have personal lives and personal schedules that it's inconvenient, but thank you for continuing to express your opinions. And I would have to look at my pregnant Williams. So we do listen and it does make a difference.
Thank you. Rusty Lawrence?
Not a lot new to say here, but in my mind, there's at least one new analogy. Kelly, you mentioned that people on both sides of the fence are exhausted by the discussions of all of this. I agree and respect that. I might adopt that analogy, that metaphor, in just thinking about the fence being between Lyons and the rest of the county. And what I think many of us are trying to think about is how, if there is some separations between the lines that we have today and the properties that sit just outside of it, how we can protect Lyons over that fence. How we can work with the county, work with the property owners, work amongst ourselves, work in an annexation vote if there ever were one to make sure that on both sides of that fence Lyons is protected and Lyons neighbors are protected from outrageous development, from wildfire, from loss of water pressure, from being so hemmed in that we can't build an access road if we need it or water access if we need it. I'm not sure what the best answer is. Maybe the I G A is that fence that creates good neighbors on both sides of it. Or maybe we decide that an I G A is not the best mechanism for it. But if we're looking over the fence and trying to deal with Boulder County, one of the tools that we have, but only one of the tools, is the I G A. And we shouldn't think of it as a way to promote development, a way to do the half dozen things that apparently still exist in the draft agreement, but abandon any of the others that are sustainability and ecological and safety issues that we all know are also important.
Thank you. Rusty, where'd you like to stay? So thank you, everybody. And Marty, I feel you on the Groundhog Day. I think we all do. So thanks for coming to speak again. I want to reiterate a couple of things. This is the first opportunity this board will have to even have a discussion about this. So we were in the joint workshop last week, many of, I think almost all of us seeing this for the first time. I, Matt, was shocked to see the, what was stricken in the draft when it comes to the ecological concerns and what our goals are. Which brings me to the process. So the board directed staff to go and have conversations with county staff. Our staff did exactly that. They did exactly as the board directed them to do, which was to have these conversations and to bring the results of the conversations back to us to discuss and analyze. Steph is not pushing for development. I want, I want to make that really clear. This staff is extremely professional. We are so lucky to have them. We're so lucky to have Planner Ritchie, who is the best planner I have ever worked with. And they are following our direction. If they bring back stuff that we don't like, that the community doesn't like, that's not their fault. They're the messenger. This is, this is what the county wanted. And staff is obligated to bring everything back to us so that we can look at it and so that the community can look at it. So I I also want to make a note about the Connor parcel again that I have made before, which is this. Over the years, the Connors have come again and again and again to ask to have an agenda and item in front of the board to discuss potential development of their property. Again and again and again, as mayor, I said, no. There's no point in even discussing this. It's not annexable. It's not part of the I G A. So so the the fact that there's this implication that there are these backdoor deals going on is, number one, it's not true. And frankly, at this point, after all this, after everything we've been through, it's, it's really sad. It's very sad to people. So that's what I'm going to say for now about the I G A. Now, Crystal DeCosta. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help on Monday.
Thank you very much.
To participate. And thank you so much for moving this creative district forward. I think it was in twenty-twenty that I talked to you about it. And it's five years later and we're making progress. And thank you and the team so much.
Thank you.
Administrator Stevenson, would you like to respond?
I don't think I have anything more. Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. So we have, we're gonna do our staff reports, which take about fifteen minutes, and then we'll move on to the I G A. So Boulder County Sheriff's Office.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I will keep it short because I do not have a ton to report. However, the biggest news I have is Sergeant Chairman has officially been appointed to take my spots. I had an interview last week and went through the process and was approved through town staff and through the sheriff's office to review me at the ship changing January twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. So we will continue again, as I've spoken before, the shadowing and the training up the that transition very smooth. We are still investigating the armed robbery at the Circle K for the It's, again, it's an open investigation still. It takes time and perseverance to make it right. And that's what we're doing. We have many detectives and people working on it. So just as soon as I can give more details, you guys will know. We did a quick audit of the overtime or the extra duty budget, special events budget. I had some staff members at the sheriff's office and work with Kim just to make sure the numbers were correct. Since I kind of came into it midstream, I want to make sure that we had enough funds for the remaining town events, the two parades and stuff like that. We are set and pretty, so we are good there. We will probably tap it out right at the end of the year, but we will have enough, obviously, for the the big events that are coming up. So we have that. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Any questions for Sergeant Chris? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, administrator's report, please.
Thank you. A few things in my report also have already been discussed, but in regard to projects going on, we have completed the paving project throughout town. They have yet to strike and that is scheduled for the seventeenth and eighteenth so that the chip ceiling can cure a little bit before they shut. So that will be happening this week. We do have the e-walled water line replacement and electrical undergrounding is out for bid and hope to bring an award of that to your next meeting. And they want to start that project ready when you get it done. The wastewater treatment facility upgrades, as you know, the trustees voted to work with consort on that project and there is a kickoff meeting this week. So that project as well will be starting to take some shape. And the third Avenue Safe Routes to School Design for Sidewalks is going out for request for qualifications this week as well. And there have been some questions about the timing on that project. It will, the design is going to take several months and then we have winter weather. So it probably will actually be next summer. I know. But you don't want to, they don't want to do that, have all that construction while kids are even in it either. So it's probably going to, hopefully we get it worked out that it can occur as soon as school is out this year. But also, they've done some of the work on the new parking lot you approved next to the October-November holes. And I'm happy to say that we received fifteen proposals for the scanning and digitization of all town records. So those are being reviewed by a committee. The bids for that did range between sixty-seven thousand and one hundred and twenty-five. And so all of them were within our budgeted amount. But there's a big variety. Some can do it within literally three months. Others are saying it could take a year to a year and a half. So we are going through those and also hope to have a recommendation for resolution to move forward with that at your next meeting. And would be a great winter project. So hopefully we can do that. Then there was also an update from our COCO compliance officer. So if any of you have questions regarding that, I do want to remind people, we have a couple of special meetings, so folks don't miss those. Municipal Court is this week on Thursday here at Town Hall. We are planning to have an urban renewal meeting also that day at five o'clock, should be fairly short and could be hybrid for anyone who needs that. Reminder to the community that the St. Brain Cross Country Invitational is this Friday and Saturday. We know how big of an impact that has on that neighborhood and but we get such good response from that. And then we do have a very short special meeting next Monday at noon in regard to the sale of the Apple Valley decommissioned water plant property. So please get this on your radar.
And and that special meeting on Monday, if trustees would like to attend virtually.
That's fine. Sure.
Any questions for Administrator Simonsen?
Oh, and the budget survey is out there. Yes. So please take the budget survey if you haven't. An important project for the community for twenty-twenty-six. Yes.
We still have budget workshops scheduled for the twenty-second and third.
Yes.
And what hours are those?
Those were from, I put them on, those are from two to five. We have budget workshop. All right, here it is. October twenty-second and twenty-third. Cassie, are you listening? Do you have the time?
I've seen two times on that, two o'clock and five o'clock.
Okay.
Let me look at my calendar. Well, Claire, oh, there she is.
I believe it's at two, two to five each day.
And the the public is welcome and encouraged to attend those. Okay. Great. Thank you. Yes.
One question. You mentioned the Safe Routes to School project budget. Remind me, I had a resident on Third Avenue ask me, how wide are the sidewalks going to be? And I told him, I didn't know. Aaron, do you know?
That's what the design will identify.
Right. If you make it to our current standard, they thought we were up to ten feet, but
No, that's multimodal.
All right.
My, my understanding, we will follow the code on this. Most likely, they'll be five.
But I started, I told him I thought five was the minimum, maybe eight or whatever, but
But that is what this next phase is, is the designing. So they'll take a look at every section of the block, the sandwich right away we have. That makes a big difference. For kids going to school, we would like them away from the curb if possible versus right on the curb. So they'll take a look at the width and do whatever, you know, as much as we can under our budget.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Legal update, please. Attorney General?
There we go. Good evening, everyone. I want to give you a quick update on the Hobbs litigation. So this is Hobbs versus Salida. You may remember from past discussions that our law firm represented Salida in that case, and my colleague Eric Ronberg and Jeff Wilson. And just to give you a little background on this case, you know, especially for the public to understand what's going on. So Salida was granting permits to various private companies within Salida, one of which was a bar called The High Side, and which is an industrial area. And there's a bar that held lots of different musical events, you know, mostly in the summertime. Mr. Hobbs also lived in this industrial area across the train tracks, basically. Mr. Hobbs also lived in this industrial area across the train tracks, basically. And he asked for declaratory judgment from the courts whether Salida had the authority to grant permits to private companies to exceed the state noise limits. And so there's a piece of legislation that's from the 1970s that sets, you know, arguably statewide noise standards, but we'll talk about that. And he basically said that Salida did not have the authority to grant these permits to exceed the levels designated in the statute. Salida won at the district court level. They won at the court of appeals level. And then it was before the Supreme Court for review of those decisions, you know, and we just got the final decision on that last week. And what the Supreme Court of Colorado held was that, one, the statute was ambiguous, that it wasn't clear as to what the authority of municipalities generally was to, you know, permit, you know, on private properties to exceed noise limits. But, you know, looking through the legislative history and the examples that were raised by various legislators at the time it was passed, it seemed to them that they intended it to be, you know, the authority to grant permits to themselves. And so holding sandstone concert series and going to permit to ourselves so we don't have to, you know, follow the state noise limits. Nonprofits operating either on town property or property of a nonprofit or private individuals operate on the property of either, you know, the town or a nonprofit. And that they couldn't find in the legislative history, an example where there was an intent to allow governments to grant permits to for-profit companies to exceed noise limits on property they owned. And so that's where that case went out. And so it's very specific in its limitation as to the authority to grant permits to private entities. Still, this is, as you might imagine, a big problem, you know, because there's all sorts of different venues in Colorado. There are outdoor amphitheaters that may or may not be government-owned. You know, Filler's Green, the Ford Amphitheater in Carl Springs, all sorts of different venues across Colorado, you know, which is basically prohibit them from doing much of anything in terms of holding events. And so in response to this, you know, we've already heard from, you know, the large entertainment companies in Colorado and also CML that there's going to be some legislation to change this, to create some sort of authority to grant permits. Because otherwise, it can have a pretty detrimental effect on outdoor music, generally, and outdoor events. And so that is my summary of that case. I just wanted to be clear. I think some people have, you know, said, you know, we can't do our noise ordinance. We can't, you know, do all sorts of different things, and, you know, in response to this case, I just wanted to clarify, you know, for the public and for the town board that it really is about the issue of granting permits to for-profit companies to exceed state noise limits. And it's probably going to get legislatively fixed in the next session.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Dittman?
Couple. Brendan, Salida is a statutory town or city?
City, yeah.
So does this ruling of the Supreme Court apply just to statutory towns like Salida? Salida and Lyons, or does it also affect the ability of home rule cities to do noise?
It's an open, it's an open question. There is another case that's kind of working its way up for Carl Springs. And so may, an answer to that may be forthcoming. However, you know, what I think we have noticed and what CML has noticed that the court was pretty clear and emphasizing the word statewide concern throughout, italicizing that, that term, which would signal that they intend for this probably to apply to home rule municipalities as well.
Yeah, I mean, my concern, the reason for us that if CML and some of the venue owners go to the legislature and say, please fix this, it has a lot more clout if the home rule cities are involved, because that's the big places in Colorado, versus just a limited number of statutory towns. A pretty small area to go.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, my read of it, and I think the read of most people is the intent was for it to apply to home rule municipalities as well, but, you know, they said there's that forthcoming case that is exactly that issue, which will be clarified. I think there's certainly people out there arguing that it didn't say specifically that applies to home rule municipalities. And so it doesn't until other applies, but, you know, I think there's a pretty good chance that when the Carl Springs case makes its way up there, that it'll be applied in a statewide fashion.
And my second question is, is, you know, and people here in the audience may not know, we're in the process of trying to craft a decimal-based local noise ordinance. If our authority to do that is in question, if we were to repeal our, the portion of our existing noise ordinance that sets a 25-foot rule, if you can hear music, well, then amplified music, more than 25 feet of source of the sound is deemed unreasonable, if we were to just repeal that particular section, or the rest of our noise ordinance, not for now do our own decimal-based noise ordinance, would the state 55 decibel limit come out kind of by default?
So I mean, if there's nothing in our code that we could enforce, then it'd be an enforcement issue, I think would be the problem. We couldn't, you know, code enforcement couldn't cite state code necessarily, you know, for the, the reason for the ticket. I'd have some sort of basis in local authority for a duly passed ordinance. So I think that, that would be the issue. And I just want to, you know, kind of circle back on the issue. Did this decision affect in any way the ability to, you know, pass our own noise ordinances? And I think the answer to that one is, is no. And there's still an open question as to what extent this statute interacts with the authority to pass local noise ordinance. Is what I will say is the court does, you know, kind of run through the statute. And at least to me, the way it reads, and I think the statute says is that we can do local ordinances for noise. This can't be any, you know, less restrictive than what the state levels are. And so, yeah.
I mean, that's my concern, because we did a draft, I think, that had a 65 decibel limit in it. We got, the turnout here is great. We did, that's probably the biggest turnout we've had. If you can explain 65 decibel, that'll put us all out of business. So I think we need to look at this, and I'm going to request, I'm going to request it now. I think we need future agenda items to discuss how the town of Lyons and the statutory town react to this ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that the CML executive board met last week, and this was a big topic of conversation with Attorney Sheehy. So I, I think that it will be addressed in the upcoming legislative section. Happy to have it on the agenda, but we may want to wait and just see where it lands on the legislative agenda.
Yeah, I'm thinking about an interim measure, just reviewing that 25-foot rule and doing only that for now.
Well, let's, let's have a chat about it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Attorney Dittman. Anybody else? Okay, great. All right. So then let's move on to discussion direction on Boulder County land use and intergovernmental agreement. Do we want to have a staff report? Hello, Panarchi?
Hello.
That was our question.
Yeah.
Do you want us to review everything again? Or, you know, let's, can we just have a really brief staff report? Just in the off chance, there's somebody watching somewhere who does not know what this is.
Sure. Give me one moment while I pull up my presentation to go through this quickly.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. So for those who are new to the conversation tonight, we're discussing the latest information on the Boulder County Town of Lyons Planning Area IGA. We have a long history of entering into these IGAs with Boulder County. We are currently under an extended IGA that was last updated in 2012. Additionally, we have the Lyons-Cemex Area IGA, which is in effect until 2034, but not part of this discussion. And this has come up a number of times, but I have included it for you in case you need it during your discussion. This is an image of the map from the 2012 IGA. Essentially, everything outlined in purple are the properties subject to the IGA. Green is what we call rural preservation, not eligible for annexation. Yellow, eligible for annexation. And then they had the no development areas shown in the red hatch. Additionally, when we think about local land use policy regarding what properties could be considered for annexation and the guidance that we have to make those decisions, generally, communities lean on their comprehensive plan. Additionally, we have the 2016 Lyons Primary Planning Area Master Plan. And then again, the 2023 Lyons Thrive Comprehensive Plan. Should it come up, the future land use map is shown on this image. And again, the planning area under consideration remained, I believe, identical to the 2012 IGA land use and planning area boundary. And finally, a little bit of an overview regarding annexation. So as a statutory town, we are regulated by Colorado state law. We have supplemental local regulations. A primary component of our local regulations include the requirement for properties to be annexed by his vote, except for properties owned by the town. Properties smaller than five acres in size, provided that there's some protection language regarding subdivision before annexation. And then finally, annexation of a property smaller than 10 acres for properties in the eastern corridor. And that eastern corridor subarea is defined by the 2016 Primary Planning Area Plan. So that image is here, should we need to discuss that further tonight. Yes. So a little bit further background on where we are with the current status of the IGA. So Lyons has, or excuse me, the board has discussed this draft IGA numerous times over the past two years. A local IGA task force was appointed last summer. They worked for a number of months to make recommendations on that draft. And as mentioned tonight, the last time the board made substantive, provided substantive direction to staff was in 2020, February of 2025. However, as we were discussing, or the board was discussing further versions of the draft IGA document, some discussion of limited development arose. And so staff took that to Boulder County staff. And their recommendation was that that actually be included on the map so that it was really clear with both Boulder County leadership, as well as Town of Lyons leadership, kind of where those areas are, and specifically what could occur within them. And so you have those properties reflected on the map. They're really intended to be kind of high level. They are not survey quality, and they would require further analysis. So this is not based on, I would say, deep comprehensive analysis of these areas. And then finally, the IGA draft itself was, as you've noted, simplified to a large degree, following direction from the town board to town staff. Essentially, the direction from staff was to go back to the county and secure certain partnership provisions or drastically simplify the draft, more similar to the version between Longmont and Boulder County. And I want to follow up with one more piece of information, too. I was at a meeting last week with county administrator Janet Peterson, and I had some conversations with her just regarding Boulder County and their perspective on Lyons. If Lyons does not enter back into a draft, should that come up. And her, and she said, I could show this, was that county staff, at least current county leadership and political environment, would not be punitive on the town in any way should the town elect not to enter into an IGA. So I think, you know, she really relieved, I think, my concerns that I had asked her about. There could be a point in time, should maybe a joint purchase of open space or some sort of joint property maintenance come up between the town and the county, where reentering an IGA could be appropriate. But just, that was her perspective, should the town not move forward at this time. And then, as you've noted, the most recent version of the map is shown here. And then, or excuse me, sorry about that. This was the March 5th, 2025 version, based on the following, the last direction by the town board. And then this draft shows some changes, as you've noticed. We have the limited development areas shown, the modifications on the Boone property, the Lucanin property. And then I've zoomed in with these properties labeled, should you need for discussion. With that, I'll stop sharing my screen, but can pull it back up as you need for any questions. And Mayor, let me know if there's anything else you'd like me to cover.
Thank you so much. That was great. I don't think there's anything else to cover at the moment. Are there questions from the board or staff? Go ahead.
Yes, I have a number of questions. Brendan's still on, too, right? Just might get into legal questions. I've got a number of questions relating to the limited development period concept. And what you said is correct. That was not something that I remember at least discussing back in February. To me, that's come up since then. I'd really like to explore what the need for that is, because once that's come up, I went and looked into Boulder County Agricultural Zoning Regulations. And all of these properties that we're talking about, Boone, Carpenter, Connor, and I think Walters as well, are all zoned agriculture, agricultural in Boulder County. In Boulder County, agricultural zoning specifically allows the principal use of water and wastewater lines. So I don't understand the concept of Boulder County saying, we might not allow these utility easements unless there, there's some designation in an IGA about them. When the zoning code specifically allows them as principal use, why do we need that in an IGA? If there's, I mean, already allows them.
I think that's a fair question. I think the intent with that is under the no development. So the conversations we had with Boulder County staff are under the no development areas. Those would not be permitted and the properties to be annexed, because that specifically wouldn't be included in the no development provisions. I think the intent on the rural preservation properties would be to memorialize the intent and establish kind of that. If it should, you're right, it's an allowed use in ag zoning, but I don't think that would guarantee its approval or I think it would require, obviously, a further process. So it would memorialize the intent on the rural preservation, and it would allow it specifically on the properties that could be annexed.
Well, I don't know, I didn't read what you read right now, but maybe that's referring to that property's need for water and wastewater lines, not a municipality's.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that properties zoned agricultural in Boulder County, which all of these are, that is allowed principal use under their zoning code.
I know, but I'm wondering if it means for that property to run its own water and sewer lines, not someone from outside.
That's not how I read it.
I don't, I was just saying.
Water and sewer lines aren't allowed to use.
Because the county made it very clear to us, if it was not marked, these, that, they consider water lines and the things that are identified in limited development as a type of urbanization, and that will not be allowed in rural preservation, unless we specifically state it. That is how they presented that to us.
Even though their zoning code specifically allows, when we do our zoning, if somebody comes in with a proposed property use and it meets allowed principal use in our zoning, we're hard pressed to say no.
I don't know if, if this meant outside of their jurisdiction. I don't know.
And my other, as a related question is, let's assume, if there's no IGA, their agricultural zoning allows it. So even if there's no IGA, there's still a possibility under the county. Does the county have any way to block a utility easement? If the town and a private property under interinterlet utility agreement, utility easement across the property, for some reason, we need to connect two water lines, or whatever it may be. What light would the county have to come in and say, no, we're not going to do that? If their zoning allows it, that's, how could they block?
I think that might be a question for attorney Dittman.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah. He should be. Attorney Dittman, you there? Okay, sit by. Well, maybe we'll come and, let's make another that and try to come back to that.
Next one may fall in the same category, which is, one way to get an easement for a road or utility, or whatever, across private property owners is by agreement. You negotiate an agreement, whatever considerations to be paid, that sort of thing. Another way to do it, if you really, really have to have an easement, can't reach terms with the property owner, is by eminent domain. I think Roger Flannan mentioned that. And I went and read the state statute on eminent domain, and it specifically gives municipalities eminent domain authority for utilities in their. It specifically gives municipalities eminent domain authority for utilities in their um, planning areas, which all of this is. So even if there's no IGA, uh, and we want to do a utility easement or road easement or whatever it may be with a private property owner, we have to have it. We can do it despite what's out Boulder County, Boulder County can't block that. Right, Brandon? I mean, if state law allows it and we decide to do it, how could Boulder County say no?
Yeah, I mean, the only way I could think they could stop is one, if it was their property. So it would be within proprietary capacity rather than the regulatory capacity. Or two, I mean, if you agree to it in this IGA, then, you know, they could restrict our rights potentially. Um, you know, to create those, um, easements. But I mean, otherwise, I think you're right, is it between, transaction between private property owner and, and the town? Uh, if it's a willful easement or if it was eminent domain, um, you should be able to do that, you know, without the county saying no. Um, and I'm not aware of any process by which they could, you know, stop it, other than if it was a major facility, uh, which we wouldn't have, it may be followed in 1041, um, under which they could, you know, through that process potentially block it. So transmission, major water line, um, you know, so theoretically, I guess, I could try to say that it was required a 1041 approval as a major facility, but I just don't see that for distribution.
That's my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for staff?
Oh, one more thing occurred to me. The language that was deleted about the ecological benefits, environmental protection, preserving the town character. As voted in, in negotiations back and forth between the town staff and Boulder County staff, as the town asked Boulder County, are you willing to put those back in?
No, we, this is our first conversation on this draft.
But that came from them to delete this.
Yes, they wanted to take out anything that was not legally necessary from their perspective. And, um, as you saw, it deleted almost the whole document. So if you want to respond with that, we're happy to take with that.
I, I have one question, unless you have a question. Um, a while back, the board discussed the possibility of having a clause in the IGA that specified that Boulder County could not spray um, herbicides within a certain distance from town limits.
Yeah.
Were they amenable to discussing that?
Uh, that was, this, they are looking at this now as purely land use and ability to annex or not, period. And so they said, if, if we want an agreement on that, we would negotiate that directly with parks and open space. All of the different areas. Transportation would be between Boulder County Transportation and the Town of Lions. We found it very siloed. We, we were quite shocked because the last one was all encompassing. This one is, there, it has changed. And they said, you can negotiate all you want with Boulder County Parks and Open Space or Transportation or elections or whoever you need an agreement with, but this will only address the land use area.
And I assume the same is true with the Longmont Boulder County plan whose IGA, that their IGA is only about.
Yes, and I, I did get a chance to talk to the city manager there. He said, uh, basically, the only reason they have one still is over some uh, servicing of wastewater needs outside the, their top of it. And that's why they continue to have one, so that would not be under debate as things change. But he said, if not, it doesn't help them much. But they are in the middle of it, they have an IGA, um, mostly due to whatever this agreement is for wastewater.
All concerned wastewater, wastewater.
We gotta have it.
Okay. Attorney Tim, would you like to get that back?
Sure. Um, this first came up in the last board, in which was my pleasure to serve, and came up as an executive session issue, because historically it had been done as executive session issues, at least uh, as far back as I was aware. And I appreciated that board taking very seriously the Lions Thrive uh, instructions regarding how we pursue growth and, and quality of life issues here. Then it, uh, became apparent that it needed to be completely done in, uh, in public session. I was, you know, quite comfortable with that, because I don't think anything happened in the, uh, executive session discussions, and now we're going back for 2023, uh, that were in the tiniest bit inappropriate. I liked very much when we, uh, and I, I believe it started with you, uh, Mayor, to look to our own residents and choose a task force that I think did excellent work. And I think the staff did excellent work with them. I think our board liaison who's, uh, uh, out of town tonight also uh, did excellent work with them as a former, uh, chair of the PCDC, uh, David Hammerick. And I expected to see the county respond in good faith to what that group brought to us as we responded in good faith to them. And in fact, uh, worked with them, working through all that and instructing staff there to take our desires back to the county. When I saw what the county sent back, my mind had questioned and shifted. And it became, does anyone have one of these? Does Superior have one of these? Does, and I found out that only Longmont does. And I found myself wondering why, when we are not getting the kind of cooperation in Boulder County we need, what exactly is this providing us? I'm not sure it's providing us anything worth continuing an IGA with Boulder County. And if in fact, uh, Jana, uh, who is the, um, what's her second?
She's the county administrator.
Yeah, county administrator, so she's working at the direction of the, of the three supervisors.
Yes.
Uh, and also my understanding that the supervisors certainly would have no punitive uh, thoughts that, for the most part, their staff has not been uncomfortable with these other uh, legal entities that have chosen not to have a, um, an IGA agreement. And I've come to the conclusion, I believe it's in our best interest not to have an IGA agreement with uh, Boulder County, that we proceed with the state laws as they exist and with our annexation, um, opportunities as they exist with a very rigorous process that, um, would require, in many cases, a vote of the residents of the town before any kind of annexation could, could happen. I was concerned with that limited development uh, definition, because it, it wasn't exact. I understood the reason for it, and particularly, the thing I liked most about it was that it gave egress in case of fire, uh, not a road, not a development, just a chance to, to do what a lot of people in Stone Canyon had to do in 2013, which was drive way up Nolan Road and go across, uh, private property there to get on the other side of the ridge and get out of the town, we couldn't get out. Um, but it's, the, the response of our residents to that, it made it very clear that they are not comfortable with that and feel that it's either too slippery a term or is a term that could be in fact shifted or changed in the future within the confines of the IGA, uh, in such a way that, uh, would not be to their desires and would change the spirit uh, of what, uh, limited development might be. So, um, for that reason, at this point, I am not in favor of continuing the process with Boulder County. I'm in favor of informing them, uh, that, uh, we are done with the process and will no longer be pursuing a, um, an IGA with them.
Okay. Trustee Ryan?
I agree with the conclusion that your approach of Williams has come to. Um, I would estimate, I think conservatively, that we have probably spent probably more than a hundred thousand dollars with staff time over the last couple of years uh, dealing with this process. That's a lot of money for us all down. We've also spent obviously a lot of board trustees' time and a lot of citizens' time on this. And what do we have? As several people said here tonight, if you look, you just look at the maps. I'm a map guy, I still, will still carry a red, red paper randomly down when I'm going on trips. If you look at 2012 IGA map and the most recent draft of this map, which one is better? In my view, clearly the 2012 map, which has worked fine for 13 years, is better. And so we spent a hundred thousand dollars and all this time and all this effort to produce an inferior product. And it's true, the only other jurisdiction in, in, in Boulder County that has this is Longmont. If nobody else needs to, to Longmont for a particular reason, why do we need it? I still think if we need to do, as based on the questions tonight, and Boulder County zoning provision, state law provision, there comes, becomes a dire need for some type of easement across private property outside of town limits. We have two different ways to do that, reach an agreement with the property owner, if we have to use imminent domain. And I don't think, as far as I know, the county has ever used, we could do that under state law. So I don't think this IGA is necessary to, to provide that ability. Um, and as far as the substance of it, it's been discussed a lot, I want to hit three great points. One is that we cannot afford the infrastructure up in those hills. The $5 million cost was for a water tower and water rebound. It didn't include sewer lines, it didn't include road. Um, we don't have the money to do that. We are struggling to find a way to deal with our infrastructure needs in our existing properties and in the flats, basically, for the most part, of the real and dusty. So how in the world are we going to find resources to do that? And if we can't put infrastructure, then you talk all day long about what type of development, commercial, residential, affordable, whatever it may be. Like, look, if we can't afford it, it's not going to happen. And so why are we spending all this time? Secondly, something that I think gets overlooked too much, it's been mentioned before, but look at our town's, um, stormwater master plan, done in 2017 by the engineering firm, it's about that big, it's very technical. What it says basically is, there is a severe floodwater flooding risk from Upper Steamboat Valley that drains through an 1890s drainage, um, drainage culvert through North Lions, under downtown. It's undersized, it's crumbling, we're about to spend half a million dollars to just prepare, but put Band-Aids on the worst parts of it. Why in the world would anybody think about putting more impervious cover streets, sidewalks, driveways, rooftops, patios at the top of Upper Steamboat Valley? But it's all going to drain through an inadequate drainage portal. This town knows floods. And I, my reading of that, uh, stormwater master plan is that there is a greater risk of stormwater runoff flooding from up there than there is the rivers flooding anywhere. So why put impervious cover at the top of the valley that won't drain properly? I just, I just can't see that. And thirdly, the most important fact we hear is citizen input. We've heard again and again and again from citizens, and it's not just the people in this room. Petition was circulated, they got 200 plus signatures from all over town. It wasn't just one area of town, it was town wide. We had an 81% vote on closing the loophole that was attempted to be exploited by the former town planner, thought that they were very idea to do carveouts to keep citizens from voting under, under small annexation. The citizens killed that off, just like the citizens in Palmer Lake, in Colorado Springs, and Steamboat Springs have killed off unwanted development. We need to listen to our citizens, our citizens, our citizens have told us they don't want an IGA that looks like this right here. It's too late to start over. Yeah, we can try to start over and take care of these ladies concerned. I agree with Mayor Buck Tim Williams, we spent too much time on it. The citizens have told us no. And I look back at Laverne's picture and I look back at what Laverne said in the 1999 town meeting that had very many of these same issues that we've been talking about in recent years. And she expressed great concern about what she called more development up on the hill sides. I think Laverne had it right in 1999, I think our citizens have it right now. And I think this has gone on long enough and we do have more important things to do. So I'm in favor of, I'm reading this down.
Thank you. Trustee Williams?
I think I reached the same conclusion, maybe a slightly different way. Uh, I agree that there are simple maps and complicated maps, I don't know which are better. But I tend towards simplicity, I tend toward clarity. And the 2012 map, I think, is considerably clearer. Uh, we've introduced some new categories. Um, one of those categories, limited development, I think is just, um, suffering largely from a, an unfortunate label. I don't think that we really, any of us think of that as what should be developed. What we think of that is, um, acreage that might be subject to infrastructure installation or emergency use or some other phrase that doesn't feel as loaded, at least to me, as the word development means. So if I think about each of the, at least in this section of town that we're talking about, is um, the categories and the crosshatching and the distinctions that we've made, I think they do two things, or try to. One is within the Boone property, they try to lay the framework for what might be future real development, not the limited infrastructure development, but actual development. And I don't know that they even succeeded doing that, because we all agree that if there were ever an actual in-town annexation and development, then we'd be talking about this again at that point. So whether we laid that framework in the map or not, we wouldn't, I don't think any of us want to circumvent the discussion that should take place when that annexation is actually proposed, considered, and quite possibly rejected, not only by board members, but more likely by the full community. So I don't know that laying that groundwork is particularly helpful. Um, the other thing that this new complication tries to serve is to identify the areas for that potential infrastructure installation. And I take Attorney Dittman and our sitting attorney trustee Browning, not serving in that capacity, but who has some of the same logic and some of the questions, at their word, that we most likely could work that out. And I take the county at its word that they wouldn't automatically try to defeat our attempt to do something that was clearly not about economic development or about extending the borders of the town, but instead was about, um, providing emergency access, that I think all of us could imagine is important, or providing water access, which I personally don't know is necessary, but may be necessary for some, um, easement across some of these lands. So between those two categories, I don't know that either one of them really justifies trying to lay the groundwork of an agreement with the county that has lots of other complications associated with it, that defies the clarity, the simplicity that I think we'd like to gravitate toward. Now, could we go back to the 2012 map and have a pretty simple answer? Maybe we could, but in my mind, that also has a, um, a hazard to it. And it's one that might not be very popular in this room. But I think at that time, if we sought to limit the property owner's rights, maybe at that time, we were also limiting people's options. And I'm tempted to step out of that conversation to let the IGA expire, let them negotiate with the county if they see fit, let them bring a proposal to the town, the full community of the town if they see fit, but not try to memorialize it in an old map or in a complicated new map. We put all that together, my inclination, and I'm not decided, I'd like to still bear any further discussion and opinions about all of this, but my inclination is to say, we probably don't need an IGA to accomplish the things that are most important to all of us.
Thank you. Trustee Gatti?
Well, um, I want to thank Mayor Porton for her eloquent discourse and, and conclusions regarding, um, where we began and where we are. Um, I pretty much agree with everything you said. And I also agree with trustee Browning that they have spent more than enough resources um, leaving this subject. And I hate the division that is created. I really do. This is not why I came here, to serve you. I love my friends and neighbors in this community, I love this community. We all do. And I feel like at heart, we all have this need, with intentions, we want what's best for our community. And we try desperately to make you proud, too. And so I am, um, I am in agreement with, uh, what I'm hearing here, that I don't see a need for an IGA with Boulder County. I don't see it having any negative. for an I G A with Boulder County. I don't see it having any punitive measures against us. I feel like law law is the only community in the county to have an I G A. And I feel like we do have more important things to discuss. And I'm so, so tired of not making any progress in this.
Um, when I saw this most recent draft of the I G A, I was surprised, I was disappointed. I felt like it was anemic and confusing. And it was frustrating after spending so many hours on this, after having the community spend so much time and energy and effort on this. Um, I feel like the citizens of this town told us very loudly and very clearly that we, the citizens of the town, want to decide how, when, and where, and if Lions should grow. That's abundantly clear. And absent an I G A, that is exactly what will happen. Right? There are, if anybody decides they want to attempt an annexation on the north side of town, they are going to have so many hoops to jump through. I personally cannot imagine that anybody would spend the time, the energy, the money, knowing that the costs to develop up there are higher, that they would have to put in infrastructure. When they could develop something in the eastern corridor, it would be much more widely accepted, much cheaper, much safer. I mean, the sheer economics of it, right, bear out. So I am also in agreement to let this current I G A expire. It's really, um, having put so much time and energy into it and um, seeing that the division, it's brought the town, it's it's an extremely difficult decision to make, but ultimately, I think it's the right decision for the town. And that's what we're all about here. I don't think that this draft gives us any, it doesn't give us anything helpful to us at all. So, um, so what I would propose, and I want to check in, trustee Williams, if anything has changed your mind.
The only open question in my mind is whether there are advantages to the I G A in the other sectors of the map. And if anyone believes that there is something that we gain elsewhere in the document or elsewhere on the map that we need to be sensitive to. I don't know of those things, but I'd want to pass that question out.
Yeah. But there is one thing that I actually go, it's, to me, it's the biggest loss in not having an I G A, but, and it's this. And I think it was Ed Russell who pointed out that this was a big part of why the I G As were done in the first place. And that is that the town wanted a say-so to actually control over Boulder County's purchases of additional open space in Lions Planning Area. The current I G A gives town, the town approval is required, basically gives the town veto power over new open space purchases in the Lions Planning Area. I think that's important, and I think that will be the biggest loss if we don't have an I G A. However, how big the loss is in that, I don't know. They just bought a bunch of new properties on South St. Brain, and we didn't exercise our veto power, I don't want to get into all that. So if it's power we didn't use, I think the loss is, I do wish we still had that authority, because I think ongoing negotiations with Boulder County Open Space, that owns a lot of property around here and is buying more, are important. But perhaps that can be discussed apart from an I G A as well. Um, perhaps with the county commissioner, Boulder County, if the open space is about to be the director. Um, I think some discussions should be taking place in that area of what is Boulder County Open Space's future plans for property that already owns and potentially properties in Lions, and what role should Lions play in those decisions? That, to me, that's the biggest loss. But maybe we have to raise guidance and try to come to some kind of understanding specific to that issue.
I agree with you, trustee, but I'm glad you brought up the change in leadership at Boulder County Open Space. Trey Schooler feels resigning or retiring. Um, you know, and I was, Roger and I had an interesting conversation earlier about Boulder County Open Space, and I was saying, you know, I at this point, Boulder County owns so much open space that is not being maintained. At what point do they stop acquiring and start maintaining, which is an entirely different conversation, but I imagine one that, you know, they may be having, particularly with wildfire danger. So, um, yeah, okay. So here's what I propose. I propose that we direct staff to uh, work up a resolution saying that we're going to let this I G A expire. I um, I would like all of the trustees to be present to actually have a vote on a resolution. I would like the resolution to recruit public hearing. Are we okay with that?
That's fine.
Everybody's nodding that. That's okay. Victoria, do you have a question?
Um, I'm thinking of expire versus just notice that we're terminating, because this will go through November.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was just thinking of timing. I'm already there.
Yeah, regardless of the, and we can work out exactly what is in the resolution.
Yeah.
You know, expiring or terminating, but I just want to make it really clear what we have decided in mind. And I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to vote on it.
Yes, um, just two quick things. Lisa, would you be able to share the map just to take one more look at what trustee Williams is concerned about regarding
Sure.
the other parcels aside from the north side of town, just to make sure.
Yeah, I do. Go ahead.
I do believe it would mean, um, uh, I'm trying to think of what else out there. There were some other corrections to the map, I believe. Um, Lisa, there was a correction to a a parcel, and then the Harkless parcel was the other one added. There's a couple other small areas. What was the parcel correction?
So we made some minor amendments that were reflecting the recently annexed properties. Is that what you're thinking of? So some of the some of the base properties changed color. The previous version of the map hadn't caught some of our enclaves. Um, and then the Lucanin property, are you thinking about that modification for access?
Well, that one too. But yeah, there's a few small things, um, that I can think of, but again, they would just have to apply for annexation and go through a vote. Anybody else will have to.
I'd like to add one other piece of clarifying information to, um, commissioner, county administrator Peterson reminded me that Boulder and Boulder County have a joint comprehensive plan. Um, and so Boulder, um, they're in the process of finalizing that new comprehensive plan, but um, that I think could be considered, you know, a land use I G A between Boulder and Boulder County, particularly for the areas where the joint comprehensive plan covers. So just want to make sure we, I added that to the record.
Thank you. I do think it could limit growth if folks don't want to, you know, go through that process where we were planning for any growth to occur. Um, the only other thing I want to say is I don't want anyone to leave with the impression that Boulder County was like, um, this is what, you know, you have to do, or we don't want to enter an I G A. They never relaxed it at all. They just came up with a term to describe this infrastructure, because they did give us a very definite impression that you will not allow, you're allowed to put municipal infrastructure in anywhere that is rural preservation. So that was yet, so that's something that could happen without us having that full knowledge. But if we could get that answer before the resolution's heard, you know? I don't know if that would change anybody's mind, but I don't want anyone to think that that term, uh, it was just a term given to to what was being talked about, where are these lines? Um, but Lisa, anything you want to add about that, about negotiations or feeling like Boulder County was?
Yeah, I don't, in my time working with them, it felt like they were working in good faith um, and responding and listening. So, and I don't, and I do trust, you know, county administrator Peterson that, that they'll respect the decision that we make. Um, I would just ask if the board would like staff to ask the county if they would be willing to consider an I G A whereby we, I mean, I feel like it's a stretch, but whereby we keep our ability to make a decision on acquisition of open space, if they're willing to entertain a partnership only and on that, but let annexations be at the discretion of the town.
Well, we'll, we'll probably have to look at intergovernmental agreements with all the different departments, because as you know, they are very, very critical to our transportation.
Right, and if, um, so if
Ecology.
The county, as you mentioned, has siloed their operations quite a bit.
That's the impression we got.
So I think at some point, it would be helpful if staff would come back to us with a list of those silos and a list of potential agreements to discuss.
It's going to be housing transfers.
Yes, I understand. I understand. Okay. All right, so, um, so we've given you direction.
Yep.
And I think now it is ten to nine. Let's take a break.
Okay.
And thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ordinances and public hearings. We have two second readings that look like the recommendation is to continue. So um. Let's uh open the second reading of public hearing of ordinance eleven ninety six. In ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado, annexing the property located at forty four ninety seven Union Highway to the town of Lyons, Colorado. Anna Ritchie.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. We're here to request a further continuance tonight to the October twentieth meeting.
Okay. Do you want to provide any background as to why?
We are still waiting for confirmation from the applicant on terms um within the annexation agreement, so we want to give them. The ability to make sure they make a fully informed decision. Trust or Attorney Dittman anymore on that?
I'll just say I wanted for the note for the record that we already have done our one hour of public hearing on this, and so there's no need to do that again.
Excellent. Okay, um is there a motion to continue this item to the ten twenty meeting?
I move that ordinance eleven ninety six and ordinance found Lyons, Colorado, and like seeing the property located at forty four ninety seven Highway to the town of Lyons, Colorado. Um be continued to a certain amount of over twenty.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote on that? Oh, okay. Our in passes, you know, pressing red. Stop doing that. Okay, um second reading, public hearing, ordinance eleven ninety seven and ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado zoning forty four ninety seven Unit Highway of the. Forty four ninety seven Unit Highway Annexation to Commercial Eastern Corridor. Is there a motion to continue this to the ten twenty meeting?
I move that they can solve the ninety seven and ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado zoning forty four ninety seven Unit Highway of forty four ninety seven Unit Highway Annexation. Commercial Eastern Corridor, C E C, uh the move with the insertion of October twenty twenty twenty.
Thank you, second. All right, vote on that.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Um next up is the first reading of ordinance eleven ninety eight and ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado, amending chapter eight, article three of the Lyons Municipal Code concerning the classification of use. And use of e-bikes in the town of Lyons. Is there a staff report?
Sure, I'd be happy to give one. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, this is um the ordinance requested to be brought to you after. Uh giving initial information in July and then again in August on the classification and use of e-bikes in town. And basically just followed up with the recommendations and direction from the board. Um, the ordinance basically, excuse me, just. Follows what those were and allows for the use of class one and class two. Uh e-bikes on town trails and then restricts the use of class three e-bikes. On uh town trails to roadways, pretty much follows the state. Um. Uh, recommendation statutes and what was recommended by the P R C as well. Um, and then also has some further restrictions on what are classified as not e-bikes, so. Um, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about this?
Oh, Brandon, you you have something?
Yeah, I just want to note for the board that, you know, kind of last statement, I did add in drafting this um restrictions on scooters. Just because if you look at the state state laws on the deal with this, um they also. Very much do have electric scooters at the same time, and so I kind of mirrored um that language as well. I think it makes sense, um you know. Given that electric scooters are also quite prevalent now, so.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Brandon, I think you also picked in your remarks, you raised the issue of whether this needed to be codified or whether it could be done by. Park rules, which the town administrator had brought authority to do. Can you speak to that for a minute?
Yeah, I mean, at least with concern to the town's path and trail system, which are my understanding is where they're considered part of the park system. I mean, the. The the authority of the Parks Director to issue park rules is quite broad. And so at least at least with regard to the pathways, um there may be ability to 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 use that. I think, do you think this is more comprehensive than that? It does cover things other than. Just the use of pathways and trails. And so I think there is some, you know, benefit of doing it this way, but I think, you know, another. Option that we originally discussed was, you know, do we just want to do some park rules? Um, but yep, I guess that's a pretty good summary of the issue, I think.
Other questions?
Attorney Dittman and maybe others. I I don't see any distinction in here among the different. Types of roadways or roadways under different jurisdictions or golf carts for other electric. Vehicles. We draw a distinction between highways and between town streets. Are there any such distinctions that ought to be considered for this, or is a roadway essentially a roadway?
Yeah, we distinguish between pedestrian paths and um streets and state highways, and so there is that distinction in this. Um, is that is relevant with regard to um class three e-bikes in particular, which are not allowed on pedestrian or multi-use paths? Um, you know, we can, we can do some further clarification there if you'd like, but I was just, you know, trying to mirror the the state language primarily.
So is it true that on the one hand, there are paths, trails and sidewalks, and on the other hand, there are streets and highways? But there's no distinction between a street and a highway and no distinction between a sidewalk and another kind of thing?
Yeah, and I I, you know, for I think with regard at least, you know, for the golf carts are allowed on streets, you know, not highways, um, you know, because they. But I think here, these are allowed on on both, you know, it within a bike lane. Um, you'd be following under the, you know, if you're on Highway thirty six, you have to follow, you know, the rules of the M U T C D. If you're a class three e-bike, um, you can't be a golf cart on a state highway. So I think that is one difference between, you know, e-bike regulations and the golf cart regulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve work men so long ninety and ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado, limiting chapter eight or three of the Lyons Municipal Code for the classification and use of e-bikes. And the pound of Lyons on first reading, the set the second reading of public hearing, ground code six twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes, just real quickly, nothing. I'll be voting against this. I don't think it needs to be codified. I think. Our code gets cluttered cluttered down with a lot of things and. I think it's good to put imported, really high priority things in the town code to highlight them sometime, but we talked about doing with some of the W I code. But I think the combination of state rules, which they these basically are, and rules for the parks would be sufficient to do this. I don't think it needs to be codified. Um, so I'll be voting no on this, not because I have any problem with the regulations whatsoever. I just don't think it belongs in municipal code.
I was satisfied in all of our previous conversations. I was not actually in favor of any approval. Of e-bikes and we can convince the mayor and restillations that it's a good idea. And also came to the conclusion it was best to have it in the vote in those previous and none has changed.
Trustee Batsch. No. Trustee Williams.
Thank you.
Um, I I was not here for these discussions, so I would like to thank the board and staff for moving this forward. I'm happy with it. I'll be voting yes. That I'll call for vote.
And the motion passes four to one with trustee Brown.
Are we ready? All right, and when you're ready for a question, who gives rating consent to the record?
Yes, item one is resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado. Awarding a construction agreement to Naranjo Civil Constructors Incorporated. For Laverne M. Johnson Park Stream Bank Repairs Project, project number twenty five dash L M J Stream Bank dash O one. Item two is resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty seven, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, dissolving the wildfire mitigation ad hoc committee. Item three are the April seventeenth, twenty twenty five Special Board of Trustees' meeting minutes. Item four are the September second, twenty twenty five Regular Board of Trustees' meeting minutes. Item five are the September eighth, twenty twenty five Special Board of Trustees' meeting minutes. And item six are the September accounts payable.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Is there a second? Sir, anything anyone would like to remove this evening? Great, we will vote on consent.
That motion passes unanimously.
Um, boards and commissions, it is my great pleasure to appoint Charles Stevenson to the Economic Vitality Commission. And Will Miss Spencer to the Student Advisory Commission. Very excited to get these going, get that going again. Okay, um, next up, discussion direction on additional curb and gutter improvements.
So we have um the section of Second Avenue at three oh four Second Avenue, which was the is the leave building now with one of the address building. Um, after their modifications there, there is a section of the old driveway that is in the right of way that's still. Left as it is, um, and so there's a section of that block that did not have sidewalk. We've now finished or nearing the completion of the pavement project, and it did come in under budget. And um, so we were wanting to see if there was any consideration. There have also been complaints. Um, I've seen a number of cars actually parked there most days, just head in. Um, which is something we don't want. There was originally talk of trying to make it head in parking, and the town said, no, you can't officially have head in parking there, but. We would have to do something more. You could just stripe it potentially, but we have. Some of the funding that was not used in the pavement project, and so we wanted to see if there was any desire. If when it finalizes and we were still adequately under budget, if we should look at having them do the sidewalk for that section of Second Avenue.
And curb, right?
Curb.
The curb even look rest of the curb. Thank you. Questions for staff about this?
The funds for this are coming out of the general fund?
Yes, the paving project.
What's left? And if if they're not spent, they will stay um in the general fund?
Yes.
How would you characterize the priority of this project versus other streets projects in town?
Um, right, it is a sidewalk area, so I know we have concerns about the sidewalk. Plan and getting things completed. I can see other higher priorities.
Yeah, I think it's a couple of things. When I see cars almost every morning, they're parked head in. And it's right as you're coming up to that little hill, coming up to that very complicated intersection already. So to me. Uh, we could just, we could just paint and sign or whatever. We also reached out to Lee and said, would you be interested in going halves with us? You know, or something like that, because these are your, your, your um, your clients are using the sidewalk thing. And, you know, or do you want to leave it like that? Maybe a loading zone or something, but they were not uh due to this hiring and. Focus on that. They just didn't have a chance to look at their budget very closely yet. They they could. I mean, we could give it, say, if we don't negotiate something with them in the next few weeks or whatever, we will or won't, but. I think they're wanting to do it because they're still in the area. The paper.
Um, well, we were just looking at it as an option that was there with that project finishing up. Not having sidewalk in that.
We have, yeah, we have plenty of sidewalks that are worse with big jumps and big cracks and whatever, but this is, this one is important as well, knowing the uses near it and. That it is just another complication at that intersection that's already kind of complex.
Remember, John, anything?
I know I'm, I'm afraid both staff is recommending this and the money ends up there.
Well, this is discussion directions. Um, yeah, would you like to?
Yeah, um, in the. Four prior years, these two years I've been on the board and watching him get to intervening years, even before that. What I've seen happen year after year after years after year is that relatively small dollar. My view, relatively low priority projects. Getting done with money from the general fund or otherwise be. Go into the streets capital fund for the projects. Each particular one is justifiable. There's nothing being done that shouldn't be done. There's reasons to do this. But over time, it adds up. Expression used to be in the federal government, a million here, a million there, and sooner or later, you're talking about real money. The town of Lyons level, ten thousand here, seventeen thousand there, thirty thousand here, it eventually adds up to real money. And I think there are a number of higher priority projects that we should be saving on any excess funds that don't go to really. Pressing needs projects to try to do. The more we save into the streets capital fund. Um, or just keep those in surplus in the general fund now, the less we're gonna have to borrow if we ever do Second Avenue. Um, and I, you know, each individual project seems to be justified, and here's some extra money left over from the paving project. But it does add up over time, and in my view, it's time to first decide um what. What we're gonna do with the asset sales tax, but remaining balance in the streets capital fund, less than big priority projects first. And at least get a plan in place as to whether we're gonna do those, and if so, how we finance it before we keep doing all these little projects. Uh, if this can wait, um, I think that discussion about. What we do with the asset sales tax, what we do in the streets capital fund should take place. It is taking place as part of our budget process that will include in November. Uh, I would rather see this decision postponed until that time, until we get a better look at the overall. Funds and make some priority decisions about what we do for what I think are high priority projects in this, so. I I'm not saying no to this project. I think we should delay this until we have a better picture of what the overall of. Situation is for our high priorities, preach budget.
Thank you. Trustee Datsch.
I hear what trustee Browning is saying, and I look forward to having that discussion around that. By five percent sales tax, but I feel like if um. The contractors here, these improvements need to be made and saving this money on the, you know. I feel like. Although ten thousand dollars here is justified.
Tristan Williams.
Because I'm not sure about this project, I'm inclined to postpone it. I'm not sure about it for a few reasons. One is, I don't feel I know quite enough about what the hazard is here, the inconveniences here. The disruption is in its current environment. Um, the. Presentation and the materials were clear, but I drive by there pretty frequently and haven't noticed it, so I I do need to take a a look at it, I think. I'm also not clear on it because I don't know what our standing guardrails or guidelines are. Or what precedent might be, or when we might ask the property owner to contribute to the um improvement of a sidewalk. Improvement of a curb, that's one thing. Improvement of the sidewalk. I built a sidewalk on one of my properties, and I thought that it was appropriate that I'd be asked to do it. I was happy to do it. I thought it made sense for me to participate in it. I know it won't always make sense, and it may or may not be appropriate in this case, but I don't think I know one way or the other about whether it needs to be done. Or who should be responsible for it or for what fraction of it. Um, I also am sensitive to what I think is a tightening budget, and I'd like to make sure that we make really smart choices about. How we steward our resources and when we do or don't ask people to participate in projects like this. So I'd be inclined to defer it um at least until we we know about our budget, but at least know more about this project.
Um, and I agree. I appreciate staff bringing this opportunity to us. Um, and I um. I feel like it would be worthwhile to at least talk to Lee. This problem wouldn't be existing if the leave building weren't there. Um, is what it sounds like to me. I know that uh Mr. Sparks from Lyons Community Foundation said that they actually had a surplus of money was here if people weren't. It was here, people weren't grants the way that was anticipated. So perhaps there is some kind of grant I would like to investigate. Um, cost sharing and like my colleagues also would like to be very smart about every penny that we are spending.
Thank you.
Right. Moving right along, um, discussion direction on our workshops. Um, first up, the Boulder County Sheriff's Office budget and contract discussion. Um, I was very pleased that so many of them came. I don't think I've felt safer in quite a while. Um, and it seems like we're, we're all in a bad spot. I'm not comfortable asking for a period of the day in town where there, where we don't have coverage, where we don't have a dedicated deputy, knowing of course that there's, you know, any, at any point in any day, there may not be a deputy in town limits. I feel like having a contract, a public contract that states there's no deputy here between midnight and six AM is just a pet. So I don't, I don't know. What are your thoughts about how we should approach this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on it. I, I was satisfied with all the questions I had. And I really understand, you know, this is why particularly in any organization, but particularly in government, when, when you're taking a mom and pop approach to it, which I think the sheriff's department did. And I, I had a personal friendship with Joe Kelly and really loved it a lot, this whole thing. But, um, us weren't being appropriately categorized. And so, you know, when you're looking at what the percentage is and then what the percentage of total costs are for equipment, everything else, it's like, all of that makes sense because initially I was thinking, yeah, but wait, we gotta do our own flock cameras. We're the ones who are paying the water for the substation, the ones who are very good in the substation. But to me, I got, I got my answers and I think they'll do their best um, to, uh, I don't think they're, that they are thinking, yeah, let's just put it to Lions. Because we're having a hard time covering our budget stuff here. I'll be naive enough to think that, uh, after we finish this cycle, we're not gonna see this level of increases again. Yeah, they have collective bargaining they have to go through now, but that's not, that's, it's, and I mean with the generous uh, commissioners who are likely to give the, uh, the non-uniform staff the same thing that the rest are getting, that increases cost some. But, um, I think we have to, we have to deal with it. I mean, what Bill said, I mean, that's pretty messed up.
Mr. Browning?
Yeah, I'm in general agreement. Um, I, I, I do think we need to do a public education effort on this. That, um, when we talk about future budget deficits and need to raise revenue and limit expenses is a big driver. If you look at the number next year, it's, it's almost a third of our revenue. I'm, I'm, you know, we're not making a final budget decision tonight, but between now and budget time, I'm gonna do some looking and see how that compares to Nederland and Superior, um, and some other places, just, just to see if we're in the ballpark. And, you know, there's, there are many areas in which small towns have to make decisions about do we continue to do something ourselves or do we sign on with a bigger city? Um, it was done years ago with our water treatment plant and water service. And, uh, it was probably a very good decision. We don't, you know, all the problems we have running our water treatment plant, we would have probably have running our own water plant if we did that. So we signed on with Horn Line. But when Horn Line increases its water rates, we end up paying, you know, end of end, increased rates to our citizens. Continuing to do our police department at the time probably wasn't feasible. And trying to reinstitute your own police department with all the capital costs and insurance costs, operating costs, it's, that's just not a realistic option. So we're kind of, in a way, we're kind of stuck with this. But I do think generally we get good service from the Boulder County Sheriff's Department. I've been very impressed with them in the years I've been here. We just have to con- continue to work with them to make sure future increases are reasonable and we're gonna have to go our own ways. The reason that we're facing, that's why I says this is a big part of, big increase. But I think I, I was impressed with the, they're wanting us to share information with us and they gave reasonable answers to the questions we asked. So I think it's something we're gonna have to do.
Um, you know, I just, I, I appreciate the need for the Boulder County Sheriff's presence here at town. I appreciate the work they do. I just don't appreciate being blindsided by this increase from one point five to two point five. That is, and I really would have liked to have had a plan in advance so that we could have covered this incrementally as opposed to jumping twenty to thirty-three percent over a couple of years. It's just, it's, it's just not fair to a small community like ours. It's just not. So I don't understand why we can't negotiate with them. I don't know why we have to jump from one point five to two point five in one bound. Why can't we go from one point five to two? And then from two to two point five, like why can't we go by point five? Like why can't we go a little bit more incrementally? This is, this is huge for us. Like, Trustee Browning said, it's a third of our revenue.
That's a great question. Has, has staff talked to Boulder County staff about an incremental increase in that T E?
That's what we've done the last few years. But, um, knowing that, you, you know, it, it, it comes back to what we were anticipating, which was already a big jump, one twenty-five adding new staff and then this overhead that spread throughout. We could do that, but they're saying next year's gonna be just as big, almost. So where are you gonna spread it?
Well, sure, but what I see is this huge increase of twenty-five percent this year, thirty-three percent next year. But I'm like, what if we were to spread that out over the next five or ten years?
But we don't know. They're gonna have another negotiation and wonder if things get worse in the law enforcement field and it's even higher.
I just feel like when, I don't know, I think of, I think of our, like, your household, for example. If you had an, have an unanticipated expense. Expense. I think of my sister who eats fifteen cavities and two teeth replaced. And she's gonna have a payment plan with her dentist to do all this at once. And like, why can't we come up with some sort of payment plan that we're not like shooting ourselves in the foot?
Any additional revenue, right? That's not in the plans next year either.
No, I know that. I just wish there was a way of spreading this out as opposed to like paying it all now and next year. It's just like, I feel like this much this year, this much next place. It just feels like big shocks, huge increases that we have not anticipated.
That's true. That's very true. That's why you guys, you know, we wanted to have them come and talk to you. But I, we all agree, you know, we can understand it, but it is, it's a big number for us. And, you know, right now anyway, the preliminary budget looks like we can absorb it for twenty-six, maybe. But, um, I'm gonna say about that, but that, well, you know, following that, something's gonna have to give, either services, programs, or we need to increase revenue, some other might.
Well, then I agree with Trustee Browning that we need to educate the public very well so that they understand why we are creating services elsewhere.
Well, and I, I wonder, is there, are there any programs to help us out with this mill? Cassie came across one type of, it's a mill levy, Cass?
Yeah, um, unfortunately, it would be a, a mill levy. You can do a public safety, uh, dedicated mill levy. Um, in addition, another option is to try and de-bruce from our tabor to allow us to collect our full, um, property tax mill. Uh, which is, both of those, of course, would require voter approval, um, in the end, which kind of stems back to the education of the public.
Those were the two things we came up with, if not, yeah.
No, no.
If not, it's, it's re-prioritizing. Are, are there no, I mean, maybe this is a silly question, but are there no state or federal programs that help small towns with law enforcement costs?
I think this is a big issue all around the state. I see it regularly and Brandon Shigun has said, I see it regularly on my manager's lists or that people are, Cassie and I are collecting data right now on, uh, which communities have, you know, have their own and what it costs them versus those that contract and what that costs them. So we're kind of tracking that, but it's a very different, very different environment when we get compared to small towns in the southwest of Colorado. It's very different than here. So, um, we'll keep looking. We'll keep looking for, um, ideas that we can present to you as we go through this budget. But, um,
I just, I have a feeling when the day's done, we're gonna have to look at, even if we're, or to keep racing and educating adequately. Because this isn't kind of, yeah.
It's not gonna give us our
And I think it's one area that is that citizens are more likely to vote for their safety than something related to stormwater or, uh, even, even the water treatment. If, uh, much as I don't like it, somewhere down the line, we're, we're gonna have.
Trustee Mike?
I think it's a pretty substantial increase over the last three years and over the next year. Maybe more substantial than is justified, but it doesn't really surprise me. I'm sure that they have expenses. I'm sure that they are sharpening their pencils and trying to find ways to allocate budget dollars that were being spent but not being recouped. If we assume that they raise their bill to us by another two hundred thousand next year, then we're up a hundred fifty percent in four years, two and a half times where we were two years ago. By the time it's two years from now. I do think that they offer to bring back to us some options, including a more gradual escalation.
Yeah.
And if that gradual escalation meant we have hours when we weren't, when we declared that we were not purchasing coverage, I think I might object to that. If that gradual escalation means that we don't have the same four F T E that we might have expected, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And I could see that they like these having round numbers, one and a half, two and a half, three, four, a full sergeant, three deputies. But these are really all fractional F T Es. The idea that these are individual people or that they have to be integer, integers because they are real heads is, uh, delusion, right? It's a, it's a vestige of the math. It's not a vestige of the way that they operate. So if we think that we can be okay instead of four people, having the support of the equivalent of three people, then I think that may be the way that we have to go and I'll be okay with it. I would like that better than saying we're on our own, like.
Yeah.
When we look at the, um, baseload, I can't really manipulate the numbers well because I ended up with a read only, at least in this
Yeah, format.
Format. Uh, but it looks like about two thirds of the cases that come through here are either patrol initiated work. They see something and they need to do some work on that. Sixteen hundred cases in this batch. Or, uh, there were sixteen hundred traffic stops. And if that's sixty or seventy percent of the load, you know, if we had fewer traffic stops or if the traffic stops happened outside of town or if they happened differently or if we had fewer patrol initiating stops, I'd be, I'd be okay with that too.
Yeah, if it meant we could save a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, if it meant that the hundred thousand dollars that we don't have, we would have to bind or pretend that we have.
Yeah. I agree. I, I would like to see kind of what they come back with. So I would love for you to continue to work with the V C S O and see, see where we can move, what needles, um, and the conversations are great to have. I really, you know, what Sergeant Chris said about, um, the big events, you know, about we're really here for the big events. That really hit home for me. And, and I know they are. And, you know, I know that God forbid if something, if a big event were to happen here, I know we would get the, the full force of the sheriff and the surrounding law enforcement. Like no question about that. Um, so I think, you know, keep working. I, I would love to, um, to, to see what options we can have besides deeper seeing and besides a public safety mill levy. I mean, it's good to know that we have those, but boy, would I ever like to not have to listen. Um, all right, let's move on to trustee reports. Trustee Williams. Oh, the wooey. I really got ahead of myself there. Okay. Um, discussion direction on the wooey task force update and state wildfire resiliency code recommendations. Trustee Williams, would you pick what's off on this?
Sure. At the risk of sounding like I would take the easy and usual path, which is the middle path. I'm tempted to accept what state is asking us to do and not do more. Instead of trying to figure out a way to do less or to do something differently, um, or to do a lot more, I'm inclined to try first to accept the recommendations that are made for a really broad population and a really different variety of risks. And then think really carefully about any that we want to add to our plate given our unique situation. So I don't think of the whole town as being a wildfire, wild and urban interface. I think of parts of it being, I don't think of every screen on every, um, dryer vent being critical. I think of some really basic things like, you know, maybe it's the five feet or maybe it's something else. But I would, instead of looking at what I think was a pretty long list out of the task force, I would try to generate a pretty short list in the first run. And I take Boulder's comment seriously that if they didn't work on the existing structures, it would take them a hundred years to make the changes. I think that was in one of the articles. But if we took a few years, the town's going to be here in a few years and we're gonna have this problem in a few years. And we're going to have it again in twenty and fifty and a hundred years. So I'd like to do what we can now, what we think is appropriate now. But from where I sit, it might not be that longest list. It might be a shorter list. It might be a more targeted list. One thing we've tried to do in the past is to bring in wildfire partners or others, the fire district or others left hand and say, what does this property need? Or what does this kind of structure need? And I think some of that might allow us to avoid some unnecessary mandates on our property owners and still get the protection that we want. I have spoken with people from the fire district. I won't speak for them. But I think it seems appropriate, from where I sit, that we find a way to share the enforcement responsibility with the district. Um, I think they look beyond the town limits and they tend to think about commercial more than they do residential. And they tend to think about having more authority when something's built and when something's sitting there. But I think we probably could find a way to work with them on this.
Thank you. Trusty Dashi?
You know, I really appreciate, um, Trustee Williams', um, perspective here, especially given the experience you have um, with the fire department at X zero. But I do agree that we have to think about the safety of our town and how we sit and how we need to be proactive and protect ourselves. And again, I wonder, um, I wonder what the public has to say about this. I do like the idea, you know, making this an agenda item on our next, in our next quarter of town hall. I like the idea of the radio commission still listening to that as well. And, um, I, I think, um, I'm really curious to hear more about the C W P P. And, uh, and I can't remember if we are supposed to be adopting that, isn't that right?
That's the question we have.
I did look it up while we were, we'll, we have to sign on at work. I'm there as staff as one of the core members, and then it will be bringing it back. I would assume it's the mayor who would sign it, but so there would be a resolution. If what you have to have the town have to sign off on this before it will be accepted as an official C W P P. The local jurisdiction has to be one of the signatories on the C W P P.
So I think, you know, I think for me, the C W P P would be more information. I think the public inquiry would be more information. I'd also really like to um investigate this, you know, the sharing, the cost sharing with the fire protection district. That's, this mill levy is one word in ours and figure out how can we enforce this? How can we pay for that enforcement? Um, so I feel like I still have a lot of questions around this. Whether it should be retroactive or how many years, like is this a five-year plan? Do we do work maybe each year and break it up? Again, incrementally, um. I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't have a lot of answers.
So it sounds like you want some more information.
Yes, I think I have more questions than answers.
Okay. Mary Person.
I agree. Sign on to what's been presented to us. But I I feel like we have months to leave a mark on this. And if it was our first year, maybe everyone may wait longer. Uh, it's not, um. And I, I don't see how a town like ours cannot do retroactive. Uh, I don't think they know what that is yet. Um, but I feel like it's incumbent on us to figure that out between November and April. And at least make a step toward it and recommendations for future steps for boards to consider.
Thank you. Trustee Bernie.
Yeah, um, I would kind of characterize this a little bit differently. Instead of being a middle path, I regard passing the state code as the minimum is the floor. That's where you start. We have three, not something we have a choice on. So the question is, to me, a middle path would be something between the floor that's mandatory and the highest protection, which is do all these things. This is allegedly, you know, I guess going fully radical would be taking the state prospective requirements and making them all apply retroactively, which is not feasible. Um, and so I want to make real clear that the list of possibilities in terms of retroactive measures, the task force came up here was not intended to be a recommendation that we do even all the things that are in the easiest, the less expensive category. It's basically a cafeteria menu from which to choose one, two, three, whatever the board determines ultimately the number is. In choosing what those should be and how many of them could be, I think we should listen. We should clearly go through the public input process will see. I mean, people show up and say, don't touch my juniper. Or how many say, I've been wanting to get rid of that thing for years. Will the town help me with it? And I will say that I intend to propose as part of the budget process this year, just like we did with the local match on the Boulder wildfire partners program, I intend to propose that the town budget some assistance for people in getting rid of the juniper, if that's what the board decides to do. And again, narrowly tailored recommendation here, juniper's within five feet, not get rid of all the junipers on your property. So that list is just a starting point from which to choose the task force. A limited number of recommendations. Um, and I don't have, I was surprised when we started gathering information for the task force. My methodology or my library district days and other factors that is, other things we do that are kind of innovative is to look around the state and see what other towns have done this that are going to look like us. I looked at that in U R A's and stuff too. So I started looking at other towns around or cities in Colorado that had done retroactive measures, uh which is the real crux of what we get your house shop that there were so few. So we've been communicating with those that are in the process of knowing exactly what we're doing. They are going to be considering theirs this fall. We've been talking with their fire chief about it. Um, so that tells me that we can't push it too far. We can't get ahead of the public and we're, I'm looking at a list of, well, expensive things that they need to do. We're gonna have to listen to how they um perceive these. Whether the fire district is willing to help us with the enforcement costs and get staff estimates as part of the budget process for what he's various made at the fall. Uh, but one thing that I feel very strongly about, I've read uh in several places, mostly out in the west where devastating wildfires have occurred. And afterwards, there's always any kind of tragedy occur, you go, who do you blame? And I've seen over and over and over, our local town leaders had the chance to do something about this. They didn't do anything. They were working on it. Wanted, wanted to know why in particular. They were working with the state about trying to adopt all their regulations. They didn't get it done in time. And I just cannot in good conscience do nothing. One of my depths and flames coming downhill on two different sides of Lions twice in the last four years. We can't do nothing. I don't think how much we do, we need to listen to the public. We need to see how much is going to cost, but doing that, it's just not an option.
Thank you. Mary Person.
Terrible metaphor, uh but strike while the iron's hot. Um, people remember cattle when it's still on canyon. Five years from now, if we have no more fires, they don't, I think right now there's a, I think there's a real chance to, for people to say, oh, okay, I get it. Uh, we gotta do C T.
That's true. Um, I have a question, uh for staff. Um, how many people have taken advantage of a rebate? I don't know. Oh, um, do you have that update?
No, I really.
Yeah, we can get it. Um, Kim just provided us another update on that. I think it's five. Five or, but only four are taking rebates or something. We'll find it. If you don't have.
It's way more than it done Boulder wildfire partners in town. I don't know that many.
That is.
I did, I decided not to part the family banks.
Can I find out how many people in town limits are wildfire partners certified? Okay, that I think that would be just for our budget inspections, but but I I agree with my colleagues. I think we need more information. Um, I'm not writing, making any decisions now. We need, um, we definitely need to have the fire districts plan before we decide what to do. I'm really appreciative of all the ideas on the list. They're all great ideas. I would love to see everybody do them immediately. But, you know, we, we, we have, we have to strike a balance here of listening, getting something done quickly because we don't want to be the board that did nothing when we could have. And making sure that we have a public engagement. So I, I think scheduling the quarterly meeting and making that the topic is a terrific idea while we wait for the um plan.
I know you're trying to close this conversation, but just a couple more comments. I, I agree with what everyone has said here, probably said better than I have. But one thing that I emphasize is that I think some simplicity and some clarity goes a long way. So there was this idea, either, you know, I don't know if it came from the county or somebody, just pick something and focus on that something, I don't know what that something is, but a couple of things I think could go a long way. And if we could risk a little bit of complexity, my intuition as a operations person and as somebody who's and have gone after juniper in the heat of the moment um is to try to distinguish what is appropriate for different parts of town or different kinds of structures or in different situations. I think doing the right thing is as important as doing something. And it might be that the right thing differs in different situations or for different kinds of.
Was to do on those years, the war, individualized property catering, you do the war.
It'll be more expensive and it'll be harder to sell. And there are all kinds of issues with it, but maybe it's, you know, funding crews that are able to distinguish what ought to be done here from what ought to be done there. Or funding a program that says, you know, your first step, like in wildfire partners, is to assess the risk on a property and figure out where to focus. So if there's a way that we can keep it simple and still also customize it a little bit, I think as a firefighter, that gives me a lot more comfort than imagining a place where one thing had been done exactly the same across all of Lions or the whole district. The one other thing I'd say, and I'm done, is I think it's important that we work really closely with the district and that doesn't happen automatically. I, they don't always show up for every one of the town meetings. We don't always show up for every one of their meetings. We usually appoint people who take seriously their role on a task force or building a document. But we need to make sure that one of the chiefs is here for the public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the advantages of having a cost sharing agreement in enforcement is that we are forced to have a person who wears both hats. Right? It's not just that we each write a half a check. It's that that person has dual responsibility in answering the things that as a town we've decided are important and as a district we've decided are important.
Thank you.
Yes, on the update.
Okay.
On rebates. Um, there have been a grand total of fourteen people who have applied for the Boulder County rebate, of which only ten actually lived in Lions. You really think, they just, they see Lions. So ten um of the ten, only five have been eligible. And one of those declined. So that would be um four have taken advantage of the bid. Um, of the other five, one did work prior to adopting this in twenty-four, no receipts. One uh has not had a wildfire assessment. Uh, two had less than five hundred in work and so that was covered by Boko.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one, um the work was six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So that would only be one sixty-five eligible. But according to the county, they have twenty-nine more homeowners to go through the program. Twenty-nine.
In Lions.
Um, total.
Total.
But they said until they do, and we get an update, we don't know what percent are town residents. Um, so we have paid out two thousand to date and will not be submitting anything for August. So we have three thousand of our budget remaining.
Okay, that's good to know.
So four, five people, four got rebates, total of two thousand.
Thank you for that information. Okay, um, maybe when, if we make something mandatory, people will be clamoring for the rebates.
I agree.
Um, all right, now, thanks for the conversation. Again, thanks to the task force and staff for the work. It's great work. It really moved us forward and I am confident that we will make some good progress.
So can you summarize what you'd like to see as the next steps and how the C W P P is done, which could be a couple more months?
It could be a couple more months. Um, I think we want to schedule the quarterly town hall meeting on this topic.
About that.
To give people an update on where we are and what we're thinking and get their input.
And make sure somebody from the fire district.
And make sure somebody from the fire district.
One thing we discussed in compiling that list is in anticipation of a public meeting like that, actually go ahead and show them, these are the list of possibilities, including the things that we probably know we're not going to do because they're too hard to implement and the easier stuff. So that people can say, oh, I couldn't do that, but maybe I could do that to actually get them start thinking about.
We could have a multi-voting.
Yeah, or we can have everything.
Yeah.
So these would be interesting.
We could do the sticky note thing. That's, is that what you mean?
Do that too.
Well, you list up all the different ideas and people go up and can put a dot by which ones they would be wanting to do.
Yeah, yeah. That, that would be helpful.
But I think it's important in advance for the meeting with the elected. Now, this is the kind of thing we're thinking about. Make it clear, no decision is made or I put one's input on, but basically because get people start thinking about it. It's important.
Yeah. Shoot for October, maybe?
Yeah, October would be great.
We have a couple, yeah, it's just lots of extra little meetings and things.
I know.
I know. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, okay. Trustee reports, trustee Williams. Thank you for your work.
I to report our conversation, which led to my saying, yes, I would be more than happy to take on the P C B C. So I'm happy to become the liaison to the P C B C if that is the will of the board.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Trustee Daci.
Um, yes, so the House of Human Services Commission met last Monday. And interestingly enough, we reviewed the um goals, the comprehensive plan, R I V. And in particular, there's one goal, H N two A, which is to engage the community and process to explore support for zoning that allows more diverse housing options. Um, for example, triplexes, fourplexes, A D U allowances in line essentially through targeted infill redevelopment. And last year, um, they had noted that um they would like to communicate with the community regarding presence of A D Us in place and maybe an A D U tour could raise awareness of how they work and look. And so they're talking about how we never accomplished that in twenty twenty-four and how we'd love to do that in twenty twenty-five because they were looking at twenty twenty-five. I don't know if these goals are for twenty twenty-five or next year, but this kind of dovetailed nicely with the Boulder County Regional Working Group for the Prevention of Homelessness, which is working on the A D U toolkit to present to municipalities such as ours to really incentivize and educate the community around the new state law that ran into effect July first. So I think um in speaking with Plana Ritchie, who was there at the same meeting um at Boulder County Courthouse last Wednesday, um, I think we were both disappointed that this toolkit wasn't ready to go. We thought they were going to give us a template and we're going to run with it. We're going to present to the housing commission, but no, they're not there yet. We were just talking about language and content and I was like, oh my God. Like um Mayor Portem Williams, I am also feeling like we have limited time ahead of us. I would love to see something happen before April of twenty twenty-six. And so I think that in uh and uh our town planner also feel that we aren't in a place where we could maybe start organizing on our own. We, Lions has always been in advance of a lot of other communities in the state when it comes to A D Us. And I feel like if you are all in agreement, maybe the House and Human Services Commission could continue exploring this idea of an A D U fair or workshop with a possible tour of some A D Us that have been permitted. So people can get an idea of what a detached A D U looks like, what an attached A D U looks like, what a basement conversion looks like. What like the A D U above a garage and what is the approximate cost of that, you know, so it's really bringing home and raising awareness so that people can see like this is possible and it is doable and we can help you get there. And I feel like it addresses our housing needs and also I can just, I've heard from too many people living in different neighborhoods who need extra revenue, who want to see their three thousand square foot home being efficiently utilized, looking to, you know, looking for answers, looking for approximate cost, looking for a how-to. And I can see with this A D toolkit, they're trying to, you know, come up with a very simple pathway that people could follow, one, two, three, four, five. And I feel like we can already do that at the town level.
Okay.
So I would love um to hear if the board is in agreement that we continue these discussions um with House and Human Services Commission. Um, I think it's a great plan. Um, so that covers both of those meetings last week. And then the Arts and Humanities Commission spent quite a bit of time discussing the twenty-six submissions they received for this flag design. Ooh, they were very cool. I think there are about ten artists involved total. And the commission was supposed to finalize or not finalize, but reduce the number of submissions to five designs that they want to present to the four trustees.
Wonderful.
But I didn't see them on the agenda. So I'm, I'm for requesting, I asked that we see the five designs they agreed upon last week so that we can then possibly choose the winning submission.
Should we put that on the next agenda? Is there a reminder, what's in the release?
That would be great.
Yeah.
I think they, I, I don't know, it's, that was fun. That was really fun. And it was good to see so much pride um in our community and so much interest. And I mean, um, I think it was um our communications director um who shared some uh, some of the um content from the submission letters or the cover letters that accompany the designs. And people were really inspired to um to design a flag for our town. It was really, it was really sweet to see.
Good.
Oh, are you thinking about bringing it forward to the board and then maybe going to three and then like a vote with the community or how you guys are deciding?
I don't know.
I know they narrowed it down to five. I know it was a very lengthy discussion to get it down to five.
You put five out there. That's a lot with the, well, let's think about would the board like, would the board like to decide, would the board like the community to vote?
Right. These noticeers don't cost.
Okay, I think the community, I think we should narrow it down to three and the community can vote on three. And we can, uh. And we can, um, our capable staff figure out how to conduct the community vote about the town flag. What a delightful thing. Thank you.
Yes, having a fun project during these times is really.
That's great.
Enlightening.
That's great. Thank you. Mayor Percham.
HPC will not have a court, we'll be open to meet Wednesday, so next Wednesday you're posted. And then, um, low hanging fruit, when I look at residents from a neighborhood, yeah, stirred up about things. It's like, is there low hanging fruit that would be helpful to turning down the temperature of the thing that? And I'm wondering if staff can take a look at a four-way stop at Fourth and Park. That would address their concerns about speeding uh, through that area and would not be much cost.
I can, um, our town engineer can review to see if it meets the, I think they call them, um, benchmarks, it has another name, um, when you're doing traffic things, so he can certainly make some recommendations.
I think it'd be great to investigate.
Yeah, if it doesn't work, fine, but if it does, that's probably less expensive than a lot of the other things they'd love to see.
It comes down to enforcement again. Once you've put it, if, if no one is there to enforce it, someone will still avoid it and then that can create even further issues.
I think stop signs actually have more of an impact on people than, uh, than, you know, roadside speed signs do.
We'll, we'll certainly take a look. Trustee Branny.
Let's see, on September third, the EBC met early in the morning and they discussed the Main Street managers, um, meeting a number of people from the Main Street Manager Program or coming to Lyons.
Conference, Main Street.
Yeah.
Mostly staying around the area. They're, got a progress report on the wayfinding signs that she pointed out that it was, see suggestion that some are pretty, um, business recovery fund loan money gets spent for that purpose and so they're pleased to see that going up. Now, they had a discussion about the four oh two Main Street referral, I had to recuse myself from that, so I don't, I don't think we discussed them. They spent a lot of time discussing the possible involuntary, um, historic defamation, and I believe that they read the state records coming from them at some point. Agenda. UEB met that afternoon, um, and spent most of its time on the referral for, um, annexation as well as four oh two Main Street referral, both of which I refuse myself from, so I have that down happening and I've done about actually fifteen minutes. So I don't know what they talk about, but I refuse myself from almost all of it.
Where is this somewhere in nature?
Oh, is this trustee report, is it agenda request? I already mentioned one, I, I think we need to have a discussion in light of the recent Colorado Supreme Court ruling as to whether we should take any interim step uh, on our noise ordinance and our agreements before that and we'll be telling. Oh, um, you mentioned that Boulder County Parks and Open Space is having a new director. Uh, their directors are retired and they're going to be appointed a new one. Um, I would like an agenda item whether the town of Lyons should submit some type of input on that selection. Um, either authorize a letter from the mayor, an administrator, a resolution, something. Um, I was contacted today by the Boulder Mountain Bike Lines. It's going to work with us and step forward and they think it would be, they say, I think they said Nederland is thinking about doing that. But basically we put in our two cents for it that we think, uh, now these issues should be considered, uh, in selecting the director. So we just an agenda, I don't know, I'm not even suggesting one form or another, but let's talk about whether that's something we should provide input on.
Well, and perhaps, um, perhaps staff can reach out to Jonathan and Nederland and see what they're doing. Great, um, okay, so I'll go, um, CML Executive Board met, um, and in advance of the next session, um, I want to bring up again that any any elected official in any CML community can become a part of the CML Policy Committee. And the CML Policy Committee is a big committee and meets, I believe, once a month, if I'm not mistaken about that, on Zoom and discusses the, the policies in the, in the big cauldron at the Capitol and brings back to the Executive Board of CML a recommendation on, um, pending legislation. It's a really, it's a great group of people. It's interesting stuff. It's on Zoom. I am not sure, I need to look at the bylaws to see if I am even allowed to participate being an executive board member. I'm not sure I am. But I really feel like it would be great for somebody in Lyons and you could even like rotate, um, participating in these conversations. I think our viewpoint is very important. And typically, the, um, the Executive Board of CML, we have discussions about um, what the recommendations are coming out of Policy Committee. They're great discussions and so ultimately, the CML Executive Board decides based on the legislative priorities that we set, whether to, you know, support or not having legislation. So just something to think about. You don't have to let me know now, but it would be really great. And then, um, something I would like to consider, um, maybe as a workshop, if the board has an interest, is I know the city of Boulder is discussing relaxing their STR regulations during Sundance only. And so I wonder if that's something the board would be interested in discussing. Don't have to let me know now, I'll bring it up again. Um, there's no Dr. Cog meeting this week, which I'm grateful for. Um, and then finally, uh, Boarding Commission assignments. So thank you to everybody who sent back their feedback. As trustee Williams said, he is very graciously going to take over being the liaison for PCDC. Um, and I'll just go down the list. Uh, trustee Lowell will stay on EAB. Trustee Browning will stay on ABC, Mayor Percham will stay on HPC. I spoke to trustee Dati. I'm going to move myself over to Housing and Human Services. It's one of the commissions I haven't yet served on. So I'm looking forward to that. Trustee Dati is going to stay on LEHC. Um, since trustee Lowell is not here, he's being voluntold to be the PRC liaison. Um, and then trustee Hammack will take SFC, trustee Browning will sit on UEB. And in the most exciting news of the evening, trustee Dati has agreed to be the liaison to the Student Advisory Commission, and I'm so excited to see that starting to happen again. It's been really missed. It's a great mission. So thank you very much. And you had a question about who's allowed to be on that commission that Victoria can answer.
Right, yes, I don't know much about the Student Advisory Commission. I don't know how often they meet or where they meet or how they meet or if there's a budget for pizza, because I feel like if teens are involved, it needs to be a food budget to get them there. And I'm really happy Wilma was appointed, so thank you for that. I know Wilma personally, should be great. But I don't know how many members there are and I don't know if it's only open to town residents and citizens. Do I have an exchange student who might be interested in sitting on this kind of committee?
Sure, we can meet and I can tell you how it's worked in the past and it was successful and, um, there's not a set aside budget for food, but I think we could probably get that in there somehow. Yeah, that makes a difference. And we still need, I think, two members.
We still need two?
And they can, all it says is students. And so we've had students that don't go to school here in Lyons and we've had students that go to school in Lyons and it's been a mixture. I think it actually is good. You get a little differently point. Um, but our problem has been getting students that go to school here. It's going to be interesting, but we have some right now.
And, and what is the size of that commission right now?
Same as everybody's.
Okay, seven, okay. So right now they're currently five. Then we need two more, two vacancies, okay. And when did they last meet, do you know?
Uh, they, that was part of the problem is the only time they could all meet was Sunday nights. And that didn't work very well for some other folks who that's their only day off, so, um, but the group will decide. They haven't met in a year.
Any year, okay.
So they can decide based on their schedules what works and if that works for you and I. Great, thank you.
Are you the liaison, are you the staff liaison?
Okay, so thanks for that. Um, okay, we have a summary of action items, please.
Yes, um, from the workshop, I have a potential quarterly town hall, town hall meeting on wildfire mitigation and invite Commissioner Stoltzman and can an insurer come to present? Also from the workshop, how would this new code affect ADU staffs to look into that? Also from the workshop, a pause on adopting an ordinance until the CWPP comes out. Ask the fire district what expectation is. Uh, future agenda item to discuss state ruling on noise from trustee Browning. The mayor proposes staff draft a resolution stating BOCO IGA will expire to include public hearing and full board present to vote on. Ordinance eleven ninety-six was moved to a date certain of October twentieth. Ordinance eleven ninety-seven was moved to a date certain of October twentieth. Ordinance eleven ninety-eight passed on first reading. The curb and gutter at three oh four Second Avenue, the leaf is to be discussed during budget and work with leaf on potential cost sharing. Next, I have staff is to continue working with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office on budget options. Um, next I know, I listed, um, I think it was trustee Browning wanted to know how many, um, in-town limits were wildfire certified. Um, next.
Oh, wildfire partners, wildfire partners.
Wildfire partners.
But, yeah, but ask, ask for a couple of things. Not everybody who gets the assessment done gets certified.
Sure.
Certified, you gotta complete everything.
So how many assessed and how many?
Some things and not others, but how many assessments have they done? Because that depends.
How many assessed and how many certified, yes. Okay, next, also concerning wildfire, the board would like more information before they move forward, schedule the quarterly town hall with public input and, um, have fire district also present shoot for sometime in October. An agenda item to review the municipal flag submissions, narrow it down to three and let the community decide. There was a, um, agenda request for a potential four-way stop at Fourth and Park. Staffs to look into that. Another agenda request on the noise ordinance and the state ruling by trustee Browning. Um, next I have Boulder County Open Space new director, agenda request, should the town have a say in that selection, perhaps by a letter of recommendation or a letter of support. And then last I have, um, Administrator Simonsen is to get with Tanya Dadi on the, um, SAC rules and membership information.
Thank you very much.
Anything?
Victoria?
Nope, that's what I had to.
Brandon?
Nope, I got everything I had.
Okay, great. I, I would.
Not an insurer, but someone representing the insurance.
Not an insurance company.
Not an insurance company.
You're right.
I don't know if I've ever been aware of.
We have two students at the high school that have formed their own LLC, not that are helping assist people who have been turned down by their insurance for wildfire and helping them advocate for themselves. It's pretty cool.
That's great.
Both of them are on your new student advisory commission, but I know they've done a ton of research. They might be able to also.
Well, yeah, I think we're looking for somebody from the state.
That's what I have a state.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so attorney general, do we still need the first executive session?
The one for the property, um, I mean, yeah, Apple Valley. I mean, if you want to, just get an update what's going on. I mean, I don't know if they've formally accepted our alternative, if you will, so.
I guess we better just bring the board up to the.
Executive session pursuant to C R S sections twenty-four dash six dash oh two four A, twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B and twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E for purposes of discussions concerning the cellular real-time determination of relevant matters of maybe subject negotiations, overlooking strategy for issues and any threatening negotiators. Twenty-one eighty-six. That would be the executive session for.
Thank you. Sarah second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, great.
Motion passes unanimously. Brandon, should we have read in both of them? That way we don't have to come in and out.
You have to do separate, um, votes, but you could read in the second one now if you wanted to, um, just.
Uh, lower, uh, the executive session pursuant to C R S sections twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B and twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions not only the matters of any subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators and for legal advice from attorneys representing the town regarding a property dispute concerning zero simply stickney street lines.
Sarah second?
Second.
You.
Motion passes unanimously.
And while the new Zoom is getting set up, I'm.
Brandon, I did send you an invite to the executive session.
I saw, thank you, I'll get right in there.